Good evening and welcome to a special public hearings held today, December eighth, two thousand twenty-five of the Newark Central Planning Board under the Open Public Hearings Act of nineteen seventy-three, also known as the Sunshine Law. In accordance with the New Jersey Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two hundred and thirty-one, Section five, adequate notice of the hearing has been provided by notifying the Newark Star Ledger in the Jersey Journal newspapers. Also, the schedule of regular hearing and conferences of the Newark Central Planning Board has been posted on the designated bulletin board in the basement of City Hall and filed in the office of the city clerk during January two thousand and twenty-five. In addition to adequate notice under the Open Public Meetings Act, electronic notice of this remote meeting, as is permitted under NJ Statute ten-four-nine-point-three, was also placed on a city of Newark website. Members of the public can make public comments by audio or by audio and video as permitted by the Zoom electronic communication platform. Now, while in this Zoom meeting, press on raise hand on the bottom left corner of the computer screen or mobile device. Raise hand allows participants to notify the host that they would like to speak without interrupting them. If you are calling in, press star nine on your telephone to raise your hand. The Central Planning Board will be mindful of the number of items on the agenda and will move as expeditiously as possible to complete the agenda. However, due to the amount of development requiring board review and the complexity of projects, it may not be possible to hear every item if the meeting runs later than eleven o'clock P M. If in the agenda, in the event the agenda is not complete by eleven P M. tonight, and we are actually endeavoring to finish by eleven P M. tonight, the board will finish hearing the application which we are in the process of hearing, but no new application will be called. Any applications that were not heard by that time will be rescheduled to the earliest available date, which will be announced on the record if possible. The meeting of the Central Planning Board will now come to order. Secretary roll call, please.
Commissioner Jordan, we have his absent. Commissioner Bios, we have his absent. Commissioner Purdy?
Present.
Commissioner Timmons?
Present.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree, we have his absent. Commissioner De Silva?
Present.
Commissioner Miles?
Present.
Commissioner James?
Yeah.
Commissioner Austin?
Here.
Chair Wuchu?
Here.
We have a quorum chair.
Thank you, ma'am. So this is a special meeting. There's only one agenda item. The application is C P B twenty-four dash one oh one four fifty through four sixty-six, Market Street, thirty-one through thirty-nine, Jefferson Street. The applicants are available. I see you.
Good evening.
If I can ask my co-counsel, Mr. Elnardo Webster to be let in. And then I see our, if our professionals, we have Philip Scott, Sean Savage, Doug Polynak.
If everyone could raise their hand.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. Too many, too many. All right, I will tell you, one, two.
Not the last one, of course.
Yeah, I see Phillips. I see Mike Higgins is lift, is hand.
Is the iPhone?
Uh, no, you just let him in. I don't know who the hi iPhone is, and I don't know who Timothy is.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, so we have Phil, uh, Mike Higgins, John McDonough, Elnardo, Doug.
You think everyone?
Perfect. I think that's our team.
All right, and how would you like to proceed? Who's your first professional, or would you introduce the project? Give us?
Sure, sure. A good evening, everyone. Jennifer Corillo Perez and Mr. Elnardo Webster of Connel Foley on behalf of Iberia Two Realty Urban Renewal LLC. We are here on application number C P B twenty-four dash one oh one as it relates to the proposed development at four fifty dash four sixty-six Market Street and thirty-one dash thirty-one, uh, thirty-nine Jefferson Street, which is also referred to as Block one seventy-five, lots one and eighty on the records of the city of Newark. The applicant is before you this evening, today, on remand of the public hearing that was held on March third of two thousand and twenty-five uh, and which resulted in approval of the proposed project that evening. The board's findings and approval were memorialized by resolution on April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. To be clear, the board heard the testimony from the professionals and the community and adopted a resolution noting that the applicant provided adequate proof and support of granting approvals for the application, that the applicant satisfied its burden of proof pursuant to the municipal land use law, that the request for approvals did not adversely affect the neighborhood or community in consideration of the benefits that it will be receiving. The board found that the proposed improvements that I will refresh the board's recollection on will benefit the community through the promotion of the intent and purpose of the municipal land use law. This board found that the approval met the intent of your redevelopment plan and that the project will be suitable uh, and that the additional housing that's being proposed through this project meets the intent of the redevelopment plan and the project will promote a desirable visual environment. Again, these findings were memorialized in a resolution approved by your board on April twenty-first. And we are returning to the board this evening voluntarily in connection with a consent order in a pending matter for Homes for All Newark, Tanisha Garner um, and others versus Iberia and the city of Newark. Iberia said, my client, the applicant, supports an open and transparent process. And the purpose of this remand hearing is to allow the board to consider the testimony and the evidence that was before it at the hearing of March third. That information was re-submitted to this board, the transcript and the plans as well, and any additional evidence that may be presented to the board for the planning board and to allow for cross-examination of our witnesses by the plaintiffs and other public members so that this board can consider and decide that the subject site plan application uh, can be approved again. Um, the applicant this evening will be putting forward its case in chief, and we would ask that we proceed in totality, that our professionals be called up to refresh the board's recollection, provide some additional supplemental information, um, and then at that point, uh, that the board open up uh, the hearing to members of the public and council uh, to allow for cross-examination and obviously public comment, as is the course of the board's um, protocol. We would like to emphasize that we welcome full cross-examination, and the applicant here is committed to ensuring that this process is done trans, with a lot of transparency and with procedural integrity so that we can proceed. Um, as you are aware, this property um, is located within the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan, and that plan was adopted in approximately two thousand and thirteen with amendments there too. That plan grants this board the authority to grant waivers, and as in this case, several, as well as variances. The applicant this evening will rely on the record below and will provide additional testimony to support that application where we were seeking preliminary and final site plan approval and waiver relief. Now, this board granted waiver relief, and there is some who question whether it be waiver or variance relief. So I'd like to note for the record that we did submit a affidavit of notice to the board and provided notice of the hearing this evening noting the relief that we are requesting and identifying those waivers and or variances so that there's no confusion to proceed this evening. We also have those individuals who provided testimony on record, and we have with for us this evening as well. They include Mr. Philip Scott, who is our project engineer, who provided testimony as to stormwater management, impervious coverage, utilities, landscaping and site design. We also have with us our project architect, Michael Higgins from M H S Architecture, and he provided testimony with respect to the project design, addressed the waivers that were noted, and compliance with redevelopment plan. We have with us today Doug Polynak from Dolan and Dean. Dolan and Dean provided the traffic analysis at the time of the hearing by way of report. So you did not hear direct testimony from our traffic engineers, but they are here today and will do that with respect to the report that was submitted. And lastly, we have our planner, Mr. John McDonough, uh, who provided his testimony with respect to the redevelopment plan, the consistency and waiver interpretation, um, essentially providing the evidence that was needed uh, so that this board can uh, voted to approve the application in indicating that it did indeed meet the intent and spirit of the redevelopment law and the redevelopment plan and the M L U L. So we, we do appreciate the board's attention. We look forward to proceeding accordingly and expeditiously. We certainly would like to note that um, again, the request is that we will be allowed to report, remind, refresh the board's recollection, I apologize. Um, and then we can proceed with our case in chief and then allow the board to open up for any cross-examination. And again, for the record, we will incorporate by reference the entire transcript from the previous hearing of March third as part of the record for this proceeding. So with that, um, just in one quick uh, item of housekeeping is that the notice of this application was published at least ten days prior to this hearing in the local newspaper of record. Uh, we also provided notice via certified and regular mail to all property owners within two hundred feet, um, which is the list that is provided by the, by the city itself. Signs were also posted on Market, Congress and Jefferson Street, which is consistent with the city's ordinance with respect to signage. We also provided notice to the New Jersey State Planning Commission via certified mail of this hearing. We provided them along with the notice, a set of the plans and the transcript from that March third hearing. We provided your board secretary, as I indicated previously, with an affidavit noting, uh, affirming proper notice and providing proof of same. Iberia, uh, the applicant in this case, Iberia Two, has fully complied with the municipal land use law notice and document required requirements, including that requirement for additional notice um, with respect to signage being placed on the site. All of the design waivers are explicitly identified in that public notice and proof of the publication, the certified mailings and the signed postings are in record and in compliance with the consent order that was agreed upon to by the parties. Uh, so if I can proceed quickly with a project description, just to refresh your memory. The application before you this evening that was heard at March third pertains to the development of four high-rise mixed-use buildings that are comprised of two thirty-story towers and two twenty-six-story towers. As you recall, the buildings included one thousand four hundred and eight residential units that consisted of market rate units and twenty percent affordable units that are in full compliance with I Z O. The apartment units themselves are comprised of three hundred and thirteen studios, five hundred and seventeen one-bedroom units, four hundred and eighty-five two-bedroom units, and ninety-three three-bedroom units. This project also contains approximately eighteen thousand one hundred square feet of retail and commercial space. There's approximately eighty-five thousand square feet of lobby and a men, indoor amenities space, approximately sixty thousand three hundred and fifty-two square feet of outdoor amenities space, and there are six hundred and twenty parking spaces. That's inclusive of a hundred and fifty spaces that are dedicated for public use that are part of this project, and that's all in the record. This property is situated in the Newark Riverfront Redevelopment area. It's in the mixed-use two district where the high-rise multifamily dwellings and various retail uses are permitted. There were a number of design waivers, um, which we can also, which we also identified um, as variances to avoid, to avoid any necessary confusion, unnecessary confusion uh, that were granted by this board uh, and that were addressed during the course of our testimony at that time. That included insufficient shade trees that waiver variance was granted, excessive entrance illumination riverfront plan with respect to the lighting. Uh, the applicant agreed to comply. Excessive walkway illumination, the applicant agreed to comply. Active ground floor requirements with respect to the riverfront redevelopment plan. The waiver that variant, that designs, of that design standard was granted. The driveways to and from the subject site from Congress Street and Jefferson Street, that waiver design standard was granted. The access aisle width of widening that access aisle width for the traffic within the indoor parking garage, the applicant agreed to comply. The bird-friendly design, the applicant agreed to comply with that design standard. And as it relates to the front yard setback, that design standard was granted. We additionally had a variance with respect to lock coverage, and we will call our project engineer to provide additional testimony with respect to that. Before we would begin, um, we just wanted to know for the record again that the project has not changed. There were no revisions done to the plans that were submitted uh, as part of this original application and that to date, we've received the four reports from the city that have not changed. They were original to the application. They included the planner's report that was dated February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, the report from the Department of Engineering that was dated February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, the Department of Engineering's traffic memorandum dated February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, and a memorandum from the Water and Sewer Department dated March third of two thousand and twenty-five. So with that in mind, I'd like to ask my uh, first witness to be sworn in place. And that'd be Mr. Philip Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Scott. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Uh, yes, my name is Philip Scott. Uh, I am the project engineer for this project.
Mr. Scott, um, if you can, please provide the board just with the status of your educational background for qualification and the status of your license, please.
Yes, um, so I um, hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. Uh, I have approximately twenty-seven, almost twenty-eight years of professional uh, experience working in this field. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've worked for a number of consulting engineering firms uh, in New Jersey as well as previously served as the Director of Engineering for the city of Newark from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you.
Your licenses is, is still current and in good standing?
Yes, my license is current and in good standing.
You're accepted by the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, mister. Thank you, Madam Chair and uh, Mr. Scott. Um, you provided the plans, you oversaw the design and previously provided testimony before this board and. Oh boy, oh, I'm, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I was trying to get in.
No, no, no. Um, Mr. Scott, so you provided testimony before the board and the public as to this project on March, March third, two thousand and twenty-fifth, is that correct?
That is correct.
Right. And in that testimony, did you address the boards and the city professionals' comments and concerns regarding this project?
Yes, um, so um, during that, uh, that hearing on March third, uh, we went through a, a number of the comments and we addressed uh, each and every one of them. Uh, we were um, you know, uh, willing to comply with each and every one of the comments, and for whichever ones that there were any discrepancies or any differences, we did discuss during that hearing, and uh, we are willing to work with the engineering department uh, to make sure that we are in compliance with the city's requirements.
And for just purposes of refreshing the board's recollection, you can bring, can you provide a brief overview and description of the property and the site improvements that we presented to them for relief?
Yes, so the site as it currently exists is um, uh, an existing parking lot with um, you know, almost a hundred percent impervious coverage. Uh, there was a, um, at the time that we started the project, there was a, uh, I guess partially demolished building, uh, where, you know, there were walls still up, but the roof had been um, taken down and the, the rest of the state was uh, being used for parking. Uh, as part of this project, we will remove all of that, uh, uh, the remainder of the building and actually the building uh, was demolished at the request of the uh, the East Ward Councilman. Uh, we, we cleared the site to, for safety reasons, and then uh, you know, as part of this project, we will be uh, developing it with uh, four high-rise residential buildings uh, or should I say mixed-use buildings with uh, associated parking. Um, you know, as part of this project, uh, we will be putting in uh, new uh, utilities, uh, you know, and infrastructure that will benefit not just this project, but the, the entire neighborhood. Uh, we'll be putting in a stormwater management system that will um, you know, capture all of the runoff that will be associated with this project. Um, and in addition to that, we'll be looking to install new water mains that will increase um, the water pressure, you know, for this project and, and for the neighborhood and in total as a whole.
And, and so, thank you, Mr. Scott. And so while you've provided that testimony already, um, there is the variance that was requested regard, with respect to lock coverage, and we discussed that the inter, the, the total impervious surface equals ninety-eight percent onsite stormwater. Um, so, but you just indicated, again, you reiterated to the board that you will be installing a new system. Is that correct?
That's correct. The site as it currently exists does not have a stormwater management system. So even though the site is almost a hundred percent uh, impervious, there, you know, the runoff goes into the city system and it does not, uh, there's no way to detain it or to keep it from overpowering or overflowing into the city system. As part of this development, uh, you know, we are going to have, I guess, an impervious coverage of approximately ninety-eight percent. Um, even though there is no requirement, we did request a variance just to be on the safe side, but we will be uh, capturing and reducing the runoff um, of that full ninety-eight percent of the impervious coverage. We will be doing it in accordance with the city's uh, stormwater management plan, and we will be reducing the sto, uh, the two ten to hundred-year storms by uh, fifty, seventy-five and eighty percent of runoff. So there'll be less water running into the city's system as a result of this project as opposed to the project, or should I say, as opposed to the site as it currently exists.
And so, essentially, you will achieve a zero net increase, right, in runoff for the storm?
Not only will be a zero net increase, there will be a reduction of fifty, seventy-five and eighty percent of what the current runoff is at this time based on the two ten to hundred-year storms.
Wonderful, thank you. And additionally, this project will also separate storm and sanitary systems and upgrades to the existing water means as you just indicated, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And the goal of that would be, as you provided in your previous testimony, um, the concern, the direct, to address the uh, the community flooding concerns, is that correct?
That is correct. Um, as part, as this development is built, it will uh, improve whatever the situation is. I am a resident of this neighborhood. I live in the East Ward. Um, I am not aware of any uh, flooding issues, but as a part of, you know, this project, the work that we are doing, uh, it will uh, reduce any runoff uh, versus, you know, its current condition. So we don't anticipate that there will be any concerns of any flooding uh, as a result of this development.
Thank you. And, and I think, just to reiterate, I think you mentioned it before uh, that the project incorporates a subsurface detention system and roof drain filtration. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And that is designed to reduce the runoff rates, is that correct?
That is correct. Any water that is uh, that, you know, that falls on this site will be collected and uh, and detained into the uh, into a stormwater detention system and will be released at a slower rate, thus uh, reducing any opportunity for potential flooding.
And, and this will all meet N J D E P standards in addition to the city of Newark's regulations, correct?
That is correct. So um, the city of Newark's standards is actually a higher level standard than the uh, the N J D E P standards. So we will not only be meeting uh, or exceeding the uh, Department Environmental Protection standards, but we'll also be meeting uh, the city of Newark's standards.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, if we can move on to the questions relating to the, the access to the site. There are a number of proposed driveways. Can you just provide the board with a summary with respect to the driveways that are being proposed for this project?
Yes, so we have uh, two driveways, I believe, on each of the, the streets um, as a result of this project. Uh, so we have access to the parking garage, and then there are separate driveways for um, for loading zones and for trash collection. Uh, so that is why we are looking to have uh, should I say waivers, not necessarily variances. Um, but this is not unusual for a, a project of this uh, scale and size. We anticipate that this will not have any major impact on the community as um, you know, we are providing a, a number of parking spaces for this development, six hundred and twenty to be exact, and then we are dedicating a hundred and fifty of them to be for the public.
And the Department of Engineering did not object to the waiver uh, with respect to the driveways, correct?
That is correct.
And with respect to the drive aisle, uh, the driveway width uh, within the building, there was a request by the Department of Engineering that we increased that, um, and that was something that we are agreeable to, is that correct?
Yes, we were agreeable. I think initially in the uh, initial, uh, the original um, testimony, or should I say the initial submission, we had, I believe, uh, twenty feet or twenty-two feet. Uh, we were willing or uh, amenable to adjusting it to meet the requirements by the Department of Engineering. We have no problem with that, and the architect would be able to testify to that as well.
Great. And we also agreed um, during the course of that hearing to install garage safety measures um, throughout the entrances in the parking lot, correct?
That is correct. We want to make sure that as vehicles are pulling in and out of the uh, the, the parking garage uh, access points, that there will be uh, safety precautions to make sure that um, pedestrians are not impacted. So, you know, we can do that in a number of different ways. We are willing to do whatever it is that the uh, the city requires as we testified to before, and we are also looking into uh, different types of methods uh, in order to accomplish that.
Well, thank you. Uh, if we move on to now lighting, um, there were some waivers that were requested. Um, however, in, in, throughout the course of our hearing, uh, we agreed to eliminate the waivers and the variances related to the illumination and to comply with the city ordinances, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. So in terms of the um, the, the lighting issues, I think the, the issue was that maybe our lighting was a little bit too high. Uh, one of our issues, or should I say, one of our concerns was is that this area is a little bit dark and um, you know, in our meetings and, and working with the, the office of the East Ward Councilman, you know, he was concerned and he would like for us to have, you know, brighter light. So we are willing to do whatever it is that the engineering department is requiring of us. Uh, we are willing to uh, lower the light, the light intensities at the entrance points, uh, which is not a problem. But um, you know, whatever it is that they've require, we will, we can adjust and, and make uh, make sure that our lighting is compliant with their city's requirements.
As part of your testimony and presentation, we also discussed landscaping and sidewalks. If you can, please provide the board uh, just with an overview with respect to um, what is being proposed there.
Yes, so as part of our site plan design, uh, we tried to do something that would um, you know, provides a, a streetscape to the area. You know, we're putting, our client is uh, making a, a, a huge investment in this neighborhood, and we want to do something nice in terms of the landscaping and, and the streetscape design. So in doing so, uh, there were some concerns that maybe we were not able to provide as many uh, you know, trees or that we were concerned about the, the width of the sidewalks. And everything that we're doing, we're proposing a minimum of a five-foot clear um, walkway area for the sidewalks. Um, I, I think that will be um, you know, in, in the sense that we are trying to provide the, 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 the minimum required walkways, we're also trying to do something that is nice for the community. So, you know, we're doing all of that, you know, so that we can have a drop-off area, and we're also trying to provide as many uh, street trees as the, is required by the uh, the redevelopment plan. So in our redevelopment plan, I think we're required to provide approximately thirty-four street trees. Right now, we're only able to provide nineteen. But in working with the city and the city's arborists, we are willing to, you know, plant as many trees as we can, and for whatever trees that we cannot, we will be willing to pay into uh, the city's tree fund. And I can tell you again, as a resident uh, of this neighborhood, I've been seeing trees planted in the last several weeks, all throughout the Ironbound. And I can tell you again, as a resident uh of this neighborhood, I've been seeing trees planted in the last uh several weeks all throughout the Ironbound area. And um you know, we'd be happy to contribute into that fund so that we can plant those trees in the areas where we cannot uh plant them on-site.
A- and just to be clear, um if we are unable to plant those trees, the the rationale for us. Um the reason why we would not be able to plant all of the required trees. Is that there are issues with respect to lines of sight, as you had previously provided testimony for, is that correct?
That is correct. There's a, you know, like like we had uh mentioned before, that there's a number of drives driveways for. Uh access in and out of the site, whether it be into the garage or to the different driveways or access points to the building or to the site. So a- in some instances, um planting trees will create an unsafe situation. So uh as a recommendation of the engineering department, you know, we were able to, or we were required to limit. Uh some of the trees that we had initially planted when we initially made our submission for the Technical Review Committee. So um that limits some of the trees that we were able to plant. But again, uh if we can provide them off-site on another location by uh contributing to the tree fund, we're ha- we're happy to do that.
And the ordinance provides for that, right? If we, in the event we are unable to. Uh whether it be because of physical constraints of the property, a contribution um into the tree fund is what's permitted. Is that your understanding of the ordinance?
That is correct.
Great. Um and then lastly, I just think that there was some additional um items that we discussed with respect to supplementing that. Lack of shade trees, and that included planters and vertical green walls. And so. Um I will have our project architect discuss that, but is that your understanding that in addition to. Um an agreement to meet with the City Arborists and Department of Engineering, the applicant in this case agreed to. Provide additional, you know, planters and vertical green walls to provide as much greenery as possible to this design.
Yes, that is correct. We um, you know, we met with the city, you know, um you know, for our Technical Review Committee meeting. And we've been, you know, kind of been in communication uh with the city's engineering department, as well as the Office of Planning and Zoning and the um. You know, Director of Planning. Uh so we are willing to work with the city in any ways as po- um to make this site. Um as green as we possibly can. Uh the 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 applicant has been very uh gracious in terms of trying to meet the city's requirements, and we will continue to do so even after this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I have no additional questions. Madam Chair, um I have no questions for Mr. Scott. Um I know if the board has any questions, um if not, I can call my next witness.
Commissioners, do any of you have any questions for Mr. Scott? All right, seeing none, you can continue with your next witness.
Great, thank you. Uh Mr. Michael Higgins.
Good evening, Mr. Higgins. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Michael Higgins, H.I.G.G.I.N.S. I'm the project architect for this application.
Thank you. Mr. Higgins, if you can, please provide the board with the benefit of your educational background and the status of your license for clar- uh for qualification purposes.
Yes, I graduated from the New Jersey Institute of Technology with a professional degree in architecture here in Newark, New Jersey. Uh I've been practicing architecture for over thirty years and as a licensed architect, I'm the managing principal. Of MHS Architecture based in Hoboken, New Jersey, where I've been for over thirty years. And um my license is in good standing and uh active.
You're accepted by the board, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Higgins, your office prepared the plans that were submitted as part of this application previously. Um and you testified before the board with respect to those plans, is that correct?
Yes, that is.
And during the course of your testimony, you did address the uh the board's questions and concerns, as well as address the reports that were issued. By the city and their professionals as it relates to this project in architectural details specifically, correct, in your plans?
Yes, I did.
And during your testimony, um you had, you raised no issues with respect to. Compliance with any of the recommendations and the conditions that were identified in the reports as it relates to the architectural plans, correct?
That's correct.
Great. Uh now, for purposes of refreshing the board's recollection, can you just provide a quick overview with respect to the project?
Sure. Uh so it's a. This is for a residential mixed-use building. Uh with four towers, two are thirty-story towers and two are twenty-six-story towers. That's inclusive of a four-story masonry base that takes up the entire site. Uh for the majority of the site. The total number of units is fourteen hundred and eight units. Out of those units, twenty percent are affordable, which is two hundred and eighty-two affordable residential units. Which comply with all the requirements of the state and the UHAC um in terms of size and distribution of units. There are one hundred and fifty public parking spaces associated with this project. Uh there are five hundred and twenty uh off-street parking spaces. There is, I believe, eighteen thousand. Square feet, eighteen thousand one hundred square feet of retail. We've tried to line the, and all the garages are lined either by residential units or by retail or service uh. Rooms that are required by the utility companies. So the street frontage will be quite active with retail spaces. Um we did add landscaping along Market Street, significant amount of landscaping and green walls to uh as a. Result of working with city planning and trying to improve the uh aesthetic appeal of the base of the building and the landscaping. The building um includes a total of. A close to a hundred thousand square feet of amenity space for those fourteen hundred residential units. Uh so it's going to be a highly amenitized, high-quality building. The building materials include a four-story masonry base with accents around some of the windows. Uh and then the tower elements are primarily metal panels of two different colors and then uh large windows um. There are several landscaped green roofs on the building each time it steps back, and at the top roof, there are widely landscaped uh roof elements. Uh in accordance with all the requirements of the redevelopment plan, and they uh they meet or exceed all those requirements. Uh the mix of the units include um. Three hundred and thirteen studio units that range in size from four hundred to six hundred square feet. Five hundred and seventeen one-bedroom apartments ranging from five hundred to nine hundred square feet. Four hundred and eighty-five two-bedroom apartments that range approximately eight hundred to twelve hundred square feet. And ninety-three three-bedroom apartments that range from eleven hundred to thirteen hundred and twenty-five square feet.
And and Mr. Higgins, if I can, you've indicated in our compliance with IZO um and the state statute and UHAC. This project, uh those income-restricted units shall be integrated and and dispersed among the market-rate units, correct?
That's correct. They're mixed in with all the market-rate units, the same entrance to the building is used. Um. They use the same lobby, they have access to the same amenity spaces.
And they are comparable to those market units, correct?
Absolutely. In some cases, the affordable units are larger than the market-rate units. In the case of studios and some of the one-bedrooms, because there are requirements for the minimum uh unit size for the affordable units. Market-rate units are, don't have the same kind of constraints.
Wonderful. And as it relates to the active ground floor garage frontage, you indicated that the building is wrapped with respect to retail and then. Uh the upper units with the use, the residential units and the parking within, is that correct?
That's correct. So you don't see any of the garage elements, except the two garage doors are the only place where you can see or have access into. Or the four garage doors, we have access into the uh into the garage.
And so I believe your testimony at the last hearing was that the active retail and lobby uses occupy over pers- over ninety percent of the market of the uh. Of the frontage of all primary facades, including Market, Congress, and Jefferson. Is that a fair representation?
I believe that would be fair. I forget the exact number, but really, we've used retail and we wanted to expand retail as much as possible, ground floor retail. Uh the only places where we don't have retail is where the lobbies are. And then also the garage entrances and the off-street loading to allow the loading to happen, not off on the street, but inside the building. So that's all within there, so for trash removal and all those things. And then whatever the utility uh room requirements from PSENG and the other utility companies.
Okay, great. And so that design standard, um as it relates to that, i- is very de minimis, the relief that's being requested, correct?
That's correct. We've provided as much active storefront frontage as possible.
Great. And as it relates to the front yard setback that was also identified with respect to prevailing street wall condition along Market, Jefferson, and Congress. Can you just provide a little bit more information on that?
The uh existing buildings um were built right out to the property line on the adjacent streets. And we follow that same zero lot line setback. The building does set back above at the base, it's at back five feet, and then uh different dimensions along Market Street. Sometimes up to thirty feet back, it's on an angle, so it it varies um from zero to thirty.
Great. And in your review of the redevelopment plan, you just said that that design is consistent with the intent to promote continuous pedestrian corridor along those. Those those streets, is that, would that be a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay. Um additionally, just to confirm, there are no additional changes that were made to the building design. As a result of 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 this remand hearing, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And so uh in your opinion, it complies with the redevelopment plan. Um the design, the the building you designed is in, you know, conformance and complies with the intent of the redevelopment plan.
Yes.
Uh last question, I think we noted it on the record, and I might have stated it. Um but the bird-friendly design standards, it was additionally noted in one of the reports as a waiver. Um but during our testimony, we agreed that that will, this design will satisfy that requirement, that design standard. Can you just confirm that for the record, please?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Thank you so much. I have no additional questions for Mr. Higgins.
All right, Commissioners, do any of you have any questions for the architect?
The Chair.
Indeed. Uh Commissioner James.
Yes, Mr. Higgins, um how did you assess the number of off-street parking spaces?
Uh there is no requirement for off-street parking here, but uh after meeting with the councilman and uh. Planning, we've, we found that there was a desire for some off-street parking by the neighborhood. Um the one hundred and fifty for the public, uh that that determination, I wasn't directly involved with. But I guess that was considered a suitable number. And then the additional parking that's provided here was something that was driven by. What the developer believes are market uh requirements. There's, there'll be a certain number of people that live in in a building, even this close to Penn Station. That will ha- have to store their car on-site.
Okay, so just to clarify, um I think I heard in your testimony of a number of around five hundred off-site parking spaces, is that accurate?
Uh it's, I I believe, is it, Jen, do you recall, is the number five twenty or six twenty?
So I apologize, but we are, this project, and it's in the reports, I apologize, Commissioner James, but we 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 have our. There are six hundred and twenty total parking spaces that are being proposed for this project. On and of that, a hundred and fifty spaces are the ones that are being dedicated. Uh for the public use, and the balance of that will be for the residents of the building. And we do not have. Um any parking requirement as it relates to the residential parking, and I believe your engineering report. Identified maybe nine spaces that would have been required or something along that lines. Um but if you refer to the engineering report on that delineates um all of the tail with respect to the parking. Um and uh I think the record reflected previously that we satisfied the parking stall uh requirements. We comply with the Senate bill with respect to the fifteen percent of the parking to be electrical charging. So there were no issues as it relates to parking, since this project really wasn't required to have any. They chose to install. To build in six hundred and twenty and donate a hundred and fifty spaces for public use.
Got it. Okay, so the parking uh number that he gave in his testimony um includes the. Public parking spaces that are available now to to the public, essentially.
That will be once it's constructed. That site is a private site. We had um, it's it's not, he he's noted a parking lot. But there's vacant use, there's that, that site was not being utilized for. Um it it wasn't a parking, it's not a parking lot. They demoed the structures that were there and it's vacant.
Got you. Okay, so these are new parking.
This will be all new as part of the project, correct?
Got it. Okay, so this this doesn't take in the consideration of the existing park lots in the area, the service park lots.
This is all brand-new. Um the the, correct, the site is currently an active parking lot, right? This building will be on the entire, the totality of the site, the majority, I think Mr. Scott testified ninety-eight percent of it. Incorporated in that part, in that bill, in these buildings. Um is a parking deck that is surrounded by retail on the ground floor and then the residential units above. But within the project, there are six hundred and twenty spaces that are brand-new. There will be a hundred and fifty that we're dedicating it to uh to public use.
Okay, good.
Commissioner Bayes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh just have a quick question. Uh I I missed the uh Mr. Michael mention is that. Uh how many three-bedroom apartment is, are you, it's gonna be over there?
The three bedrooms will be ninety-three three-bedroom apartments.
Uh correct. And out of the, I believe there's a two-hundred-and-eighty-four unit affordable, out of the two-hundred-and-forty uh eighty-four unit. Uh how many three-bedroom apartment that you plan to build for affordable?
The affordable is twenty percent of the um. Twenty percent of the two hundred and eighty-two are, will be um the three bedrooms. So let me just do that math real quick, because I don't think I have that down. So two eighty-two times point two, yeah. So I believe fifty-six of those uh three bedrooms.
Thank you very much.
Will be affordable.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Saying no more questions from Commissioners, who is your next professional?
Uh Doug.
Wait, pause, I see a hand raised, Commissioner Purge.
Yeah, my question is, uh how many jobs, how many people looking to hire, run that complex? How many people gonna take?
Uh uh so we can answer that through testimony with our planner uh for the architect, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Purge. Ms. Gorilla Perez.
Sure. Uh Doug Polynak, our traffic engineer.
Good evening, Ms. Polynak. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Sure, my name is Douglas Polynak, P.O.L.Y.N.I.A.K. I am the uh traffic engineering consultant for this application.
Thank you. Mr. Polynak, if you can, please provide the board the benefit of your educational background and your licenses for qualification.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm a graduate of Lehigh University in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. Uh I acquired a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering in nineteen ninety-eight. Since that time, I've been working in the field of traffic engineering. Uh I've been licensed as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey for approximately the last twenty-one years. Um I work with Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineers, and I've testified before approximately a hundred and twenty municipal planning and zoning boards within the state of New Jersey. Uh and I believe I was last in Newark around um September, October.
Thank you. I'd like to, and your license, you indicated is currently in good standing?
Yes, it is.
All right, you're accepted by the board, Mr. Polynak.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Polynak, there, your office prepared the traffic impact assessment that's dated twenty, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Um and the study did address the levels of surface site distances, et cetera, et cetera, um as it relates to this project, correct?
Yes, we performed a comprehensive traffic impact assessment that studied uh the traffic operations at the surrounding intersections.
Great. And you um you heard the testimony that was just provided, and you reviewed the record. And were a part of the hearing um as it relates to the project and and the preparation of the plans and your report. Uh that was submitted as part of the March hearing, correct?
That's right.
And just for clarification, we indicated, and the testimony before this board. Uh confirmed that this project will have two hundred, I mean, I apologize, six hundred and twenty new parking spaces, is that correct?
Correct, six hundred and twenty parking spaces for the entirety of the site uh with a hundred and fifty for city use.
Correct. And that's new pro- that's new parking that currently does not exist on the site, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, great. And if you can, please provide the board with an overview with respect to your findings uh from, that were listed in your traffic report.
Uh yeah, sure. Um just to go through our report. Uh we start off our general traffic impact assessment by doing traffic counts to find out existing operations and existing conditions surrounding the property. Uh we did those peak period traffic volume counts during the morning and evening rush hour periods when traffic is generally at its highest, so. We counted the surrounding four intersections, the Market Street, Raymond Boulevard and Jefferson Street intersection. Market Street, Raymond Boulevard and Congress Street intersection, and the Ferry Street intersections with both Jefferson and Congress. And we took those counts back in February of two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay.
Also, based on some city co- uh the city traffic engineer had some comments regarding the Downing Street intersection in his review letter. And we also recently performed counts at that location uh on November eleventh. And we also recently performed counts at that location on November eleventh of this year. And we calculated levels of service at those intersections to get a base of what is currently happening out there. And levels of service, I'm sure you've heard, are like a report card with A being exceptional and F operating at or beyond capacity. And in this instance, all the intersections were operating, movements were operating at a level of service D or better. The next step in the analysis is to project the anticipated peak hour traffic volumes associated with the development itself. And using the industry standard Institute of Transportation Engineer's Trip Generation Manual, using land use high-rise residential with ground floor commercial, which applies for the development proposed. We calculated the trip generation and we found conservatively that the site's going to have about four hundred in-out movements during its busiest morning peak hour and about three hundred during the evening peak hour. However, I'd like to consider those traffic volumes extremely conservative as that we didn't take any credit for the previously operating parking lot that was on the site. It's not in operation now, but it was some time ago. And it doesn't necessarily take into account the proximity to Penn Station, which is within fifteen hundred feet, which is certainly walkable and will be a great amenity for those commuting during the morning and evening peak periods and allows for less reliance upon personal vehicles during those commuter hours. And lastly, as we've just discussed, there's only approximately four hundred and seventy parking spaces available for the site, the residents and the retail. So that actually restricts traffic generation as well. You can only have, you know, as a certain percentage of trips as you have parking spaces. So we took our existing traffic volumes and we created a future condition under no build and build conditions with and without the development. And to do so, we added the growth factor that's been established by the New Jersey Department of Transportation for Essex County. And we created a no build year. And then to create the build year, we added the site traffic volumes on there. And then we again did that level of service capacity analysis to determine how the intersections are operating with and without the proposed development. To go through the intersections, Jefferson and Market Street, there'll be no changes in levels of service. Movements will continue to operate at a level of service C or better. Jefferson and Ferry Street will experience levels of service D or better during both peak hours. Congress Street and Market Street will operate at a level of service C or better. And the site driveways in Downing Street, which we took a new look at, will operate at a level of service B or better. At Congress Street and Ferry Street, the intersection movements in the northbound and southbound direction during the morning peak hour will experience some capacity constraints without the addition of the site traffic and with the addition of the site traffic. So as I said, this was a conservative analysis. Probably a worst-case scenario because we did apply some trip generation that was a little aggressive, but we wanted to make sure that we took all impacts into account. But within our report, we recommended potentially installing a four-way stop sign at that location to meter traffic from Congress onto Ferry Street, if that would be acceptable to the city engineer. The city engineer in their review letter also asked that we look at the potential for traffic signalization at that location. And in order to determine, you know, if the signal's appropriate at that location, there's certain warrants that are established by the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Based on the volumes at that location, a signal is not warranted just based on peak hour volumes, four-hour warrants, and they also have eight-hour warrants over the course of a day. However, if the future, in the future, if the city does feel that signalization or the, the traffic engineer for the city thinks traffic signalization is appropriate at that location, just to give a, an idea of what kind of contribution of traffic. Is at that location, the site will generate approximately thirteen percent of the traffic conservatively there. So that would be the contribution associated with any kind of improvements at that location based on the volumes that the site will generate and process through that intersection. So overall, our, our study has determined that, you know, the proposed impacts have been reviewed and considered as a redevelopment application by the city. And it doesn't create any necessarily unforeseen traffic impacts when conservatively calculated outside of those that can be mitigated through efforts with the city professionals and the applicant.
Thank you. You did receive the report you indicated dated February twenty-fifth, correct?
From, from the city traffic engineer, yes.
Correct. And, and in his, on his second page, he just asked for some additional clarity with respect to the notes on your traffic impact analysis with respect to Congress Street and Ferry Street. If you can just provide that clarification.
Yeah, I guess like about halfway down the page, there were some bullets. There was actually one or two typos in our report where we were clarifying between the morning and evening peak hours and the results of that analysis. The first bullet in each of those sections was for the morning and then the second that followed up also said morning, though should say evening. So it was just inadvertent. We left out evening as opposed to changing it from the morning.
No worries. I just wanted that clarification, but that did not impact at all the results of your report and your study, correct?
No, it was just an improper listing.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I have no additional questions.
All right, commissioners, do any of you have any questions for Mr. Polynak? All right, seeing none, your next professional?
Thank you. My next professional is Mr. John McDonough.
Good evening, Mr. Grant. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give shall be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Sure thing. Hi there, everyone. My name is John McDonough. It's spelled M-C capital D-O-N-O-U-G-H. And my business address, one oh one Gibraltar Drive over in Parsippany, New Jersey. My affiliation is as the project planner.
Thank you. And Mr. McDonough, you've presented before this board and been accepted as an expert in the field of professional planning, correct?
Yes, I have.
You're accepted this evening as well.
Thank you, ma'am chair.
Thank you. Mr. McDonough, you previously provided the testimony before this board as it relates to this application on the March, at the March third hearing, correct?
Yes, I did.
And in that testimony, you provided your professional opinion as to the project's compliance with the redevelopment plan standards and the, the land use matters in the city, correct?
Yes, I did.
And just to refresh the board's recollection as it relates to the, the zoning and the redevelopment. In two thousand and twenty-two, the Municipal Council of the City of Newark adopted the three sixty master plan, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And you have reviewed and are familiar with that master plan as well as the applicable city ordinances and the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan and the various amendments thereto, correct?
Correct. I spend a lot of time in all three.
And in, in, in your review of that, of those documents, does the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan authorize this planning board to grant variance and/or waivers or any deviations from the standards that are outlined therein?
Most certainly does, yes.
Okay. And in your opinion, as a professional planner, does the redevelopment plan supersede the zoning ordinances of the City of Newark?
We're supposed to look at regulations by, based on their clear and plain language. And that's exactly what the redevelopment plan says, that these regulations shall supersede the Newark zoning ordinances. It's clear and plain to me.
Does that stipulate, is that stipulated in the redevelopment plan?
Yes.
Okay. And you've heard the testimony, you were here at the time of the hearing, you've reviewed the report, the transcript and heard the testimony from our professionals. You've also had an opportunity to review all of the reports and the replants from the city, correct? Mr. McDonough?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Now we can. I said you, you heard the testimony this evening that further supplemented the testimony provided at the hearing of March third, correct? Okay, you, it skipped, did you say correct?
I did. Is it skipping?
It just skipped at that point. I can hear you clearly now.
The answer is correct, yes.
And during the, the professional reports, you've also had an opportunity to review them and you discussed them throughout your testimony on March third, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And in those reports, there were several relief items that were identified as waivers. In planning terms, are these properly being treated as waivers rather than variances in your review?
Yes, they're properly treated as waivers or as we would call them, design exceptions in land use practice in that they are in the design regulation sections of the redevelopment plan, separate and distinct from the use regulations, separate and distinct from the bulk regulations.
Okay, great. And so the, you've had an opportunity to review the documents that are also not only part of this application, but part of the, the litigation that's pending. And specifically the claims with respect to waivers and whether they are permitted and whether this board, if any deviation, if I can stand corrected, I apologize. Any deviation must be a variance. The interpretation that any deviation of the redevelopment plan must be a variance, is that correct?
I disagree.
Correct. So the plaintiff makes that claim and you disagree, correct?
Correct.
Can you please elaborate on that?
Sure thing. The redevelopment plan allows this board authority to grant site plan approval. And when we look at the municipal land use law at section NJSA forty column fifty-five D dash fifty-one B, again, clear and plain language here, the planning board, when acting upon applications for site plan approval, shall have the power to grant such exceptions from the requirements for site plan approval as may be reasonable and within the general purpose and intent of the provisions for site plan review. Pretty clear to me that if you allow for one, the other goes hand in hand with it.
Okay. And in redevelopment practice, in your review as a planner, design waivers are routinely granted for layout, circulation, landscaping, facade and treatments, et cetera?
All the time, yes.
Okay. Additionally, in this matter, there is an argument that was made with respect to the ground floor parking and specifically noting that the active ground, the street frontage, the active street frontage would require a use variance. Do you agree with that assessment?
No, parking is permitted in the, in the redevelopment plan, in the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan mixed use two district. It's not required, but it is permitted. And the essence of that active street frontage is that the parking area is supposed to be wrapped with active uses, retail and residential lobbies is what this applicant is proposing here. Obviously, we need access into and out of that structure. But again, bearing in mind, there is zero active use there now on this site. So it is a clear movement directly towards the, the essence of what the redevelopment plan wants and that particular aspect.
And in your review of the redevelopment plan, would you say that the active street front requirement in section AP is a design standard and not a use restriction?
It can't get any clearer. If you look at the, first of all, that the requirement is in the design section. The reference to active street frontage talks about it as being a design regulation, so yes.
Okay.
It's a design standard.
Right. And the redevelopment plan also clearly permits structured parking as accessory to mixed-use residential development, correct?
It does.
Okay. And as you just indicated, and I think we've heard testimony from the professionals, this project provides retail and residential lobby frontage along Market and Jefferson and Congress and with screening of any parking elements, correct?
That's correct. Our architect, our applicant did an excellent job in meeting the, the intent of the ordinance.
So from your planning perspective, why does the active frontage standard not trigger this use variance?
Again, it's a design element, it's not a use element. And we're not looking for any, any relief here related to the use itself. Again, parking is not prohibited. The requirement is, is design-related that it be wrapped, and that's exactly what the applicant is doing here.
Wonderful. And if, and even if we, plaintiff's interpretation were accepted, assuming for argument's sake, not, we, we disagree completely with the position, what would it mean with respect to the board's authority for any relief that would be granted with respect to that?
I'm not sure I understand the quote. What would, could you rephrase it?
So even if the plaintiff's interpretation, meaning that we don't satisfy that requirement for an active street frontage, what would the, that, what would that mean for the board's authority? What could the board grant for relief from that requirement from the redevelopment plan, which we identify as a design standard?
They could grant variance relief.
Perfect. So under the, your interpretation of the redevelopment, of the redevelopment plan, the relief that this board would be able to grant for deviation from that street frontage is a variance?
Again, I, I believe it's a, it's a design exception, but to the extent it's interpreted as a, as a variance, we've given all the justification under the statutory criteria for, for variance as well.
Yeah, no, we agree. For, this was purposes for argument's sake if it was interpreted that way. But you had just provided testimony that the redevelopment, redevelopment plan clearly indicates that this is a design standard, correct?
Correct.
Right, perfect. And you just provided additional testimony that under, that this board retains the full and legal authority to grant variance relief and waiver relief from the redevelopment area, from the redevelopment plan, correct?
Correct.
Perfect. So if we can just get back to the additional variance waivers that were raised, identified potentially as variances as it relates to the six-foot setback. Again, they indicated that the board is not authorized to grant that type of relief. Do you agree?
Well, the record already reflects justification for the interpretation that setback relief is required. But in my opinion, relief is not required because the language, the clear and plain language of the redevelopment plan is that the prevailing setback shall, shall apply. And on all three streets, we've got a zero-foot setback, which what the applicant is respecting.
Perfect. And as it relates to the impervious lock coverage that is being proposed here, is that a, a valid zoning violation under the redevelopment plan?
No, there's no requirement for coverage in the redevelopment plan. To the extent it's interpreted that the zoning ordinance applies, again, we're looking at clear and plain language in the redevelopment plan that says this redevelopment plan shall supersede the Newark zoning regulations. So I don't think it applies, but again, we've given justification to the extent it's interpreted that it does, mitigated by substantial drainage improvements on a site that is presently uncontrolled.
Thank you. And if I can, you know, we are, we have taken the position that no variances are required, that these are design standards. However, if we were to assess this as variance requests, would this project meet the variance standards if the board treated them as C variances?
Yes, it would.
Okay. And in your opinion, the project, would it satisfy the C two flexible standard?
It would. And we gave the board, the record reflects the purposes of zoning that would be advanced and the overall project benefits and how they would substantially outweigh any detriments associated with what is really very, very minor design-related relief here. The heavier bulk controls, height of the building, the use, the, the parking doesn't even need relief. All of those more intense zoning controls are, are met here. Those core zoning controls are met. These are lesser design elements.
Great. And at the hearing of March third, you provided testimony as to each of those items, correct?
We did, yes.
And you provided your zoning considerations and detailed how the project aligned with the redevelopment plan parameters, along with the planning rationale for why this project should be approved, is that correct?
That's correct. I think the phrase I used was this is a golden opportunity to revitalize a stagnant site that is in a very important location in, in the community. So yes, the positives substantially outweigh any negatives here.
Great. And in your opinion, the application continues to comply with the redevelopment, redevelopment plan, correct?
Yes.
It satisfies, in your opinion, the applicable planning and engineering standards?
This is, this project is designed in accordance with sound planning standards, yes.
Okay. I have no additional questions for Mr. McDonough.
Commissioners, do any of you have any questions for Mr. McDonough, the planner? All right, I don't see any raised hands. So at this time, what we want to do is to open up the floor if there is an attorney representing the public who would like to present cross-examination at this point, if you could raise your hand. You're muted, Mr. Steinhegen.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for entertaining cross-examination. I also just do want to clarify before I begin that I do believe that cross-examination should be available to not only myself who are representing Newark Homes for All, Homes for All Newark, but to any other member of the public should be able to get up and cross-examine.
Steinhegen, would you, would you identify your client?
Who, who? Yes, I, I will. I just would like to say one more thing. I just want to clarify, Ms. Ms. Corilla Perez set forth how we're going to proceed tonight, but I do want to say that our client does want to present an oppositional case and we're prepared to present witnesses. Okay, so my name is Renee Steinhegen. I'm the executive director of New Jersey Appleseed Public Interest Law Center. And I, with my co-counsel Cynthia Hagiyanis, will be representing tonight Homes for All Newark, Homes for All Newark. Okay. Who was a plaintiff. And I would also like to clarify that the litigation is no longer pending. It was dismissed.
Okay.
So part of the consent order was a dismissal.
Yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted to let everybody know that there's no litigation pending. So I'm going to start in the, in the order that you presented your witnesses with Mr. Scott, if that's possible. Mr. Scott, let me try to focus. If you're on screen, I don't see Mr. Scott on screen anymore.
He's here.
I have a question. Are you, you're going to cross examine our witnesses and then you're going to put your witnesses on?
After I cross examine, yes, we would like to present a case.
Okay.
And then I would presume there will be public comment after that. And then if you, depending on timing, we'll have a little bit of closing, if that's possible. So Mr. Scott, I prepared, I want to just confirm, did you review your testimony that you gave in the March hearing?
I have not reviewed it, no.
Because I have prepared cross examinations primarily based on your testimony that you gave in the March hearing. But I did notice tonight for the first time, you did say that the applicant has made of, has, has requested a variance for lot coverage. Could you explain where you have noticed that since the previous notice for the hearing? The staff report on this, in this case, the resolution in this case? And now the new notice that was sent out and published in the new, new, in the Star Ledger does not give us any notice that you are seeking any variance for lot coverage or for impervious lot coverage?
I don't know that I said that we've requested a variance for, for lot coverage. I do know that we, our application did not have any variances when we applied. So in terms of there being a potential variance, you know, what we typically do in, in most projects is that we put in a catchall for any and all variances. This may be, you know, if it's considered a variance, so you know, we provided testimony to address it. If it's considered a design waiver, we addressed it, but it, and I don't think that it is considered a variance. And when we made the application, I don't know that a variance was requested because we didn't think that one was required at that time of submission.
Okay. So I just want to confirm. So you, so the applicant is not requesting a variance for lot coverage?
I would have to defer to our attorney on that. I did not prepare the actual application in terms of requesting variances.
Okay, but you did testify now. You did say something about that if we are requesting, and I just wanted to ask you, do you know what, from what standard you would be requesting that lot coverage variance from?
Well, I, I don't think that there is a variance. As we, as I mentioned, that there is a variance. You know, I provided testimony to address it, but I personally do not think that variance is requested. If I remember correctly, there was nothing in the
But how would you be able, how would you be able to provide testimony justifying a variance that you cannot identify what is the standard that you're requesting the variance from?
Well, it was brought to my attention by our attorney and I believe in maybe one of the review letters that there may have been a question of it being a variance, but from my
What would be the standard of review of that variance? How would you justify it?
I'm not sure. What, what do you mean when you say justifying the variance?
Well, you said, you said, you provide, you, you just said that you just provided us testimony justifying such a variance if such a variance is required.
Well, it was, it was, it was brought up, it was questioned as to whether or not there was a variance. So you know, I'm addressing it, you know, in advance of there being somebody questioning.
So what is, so, since we don't know what we would be getting a variance from, what the standard is, I would like to know what is your justification for the ninety-eight percent impervious lot coverage and pretty much hundred percent lot coverage? As a factual matter?
As a factual matter, impervious coverage has to do with the amount of runoff that's going to be generated by the development. With our project, we are addressing the runoff by providing a stormwater detention system that is going to detain and collect and detain all of the runoff that's coming from this project. So whether this project has one hundred percent or ninety-eight percent or fifty percent, we are containing the runoff regardless of how much impervious coverage there is on the site.
Okay. So it's your position that the, any variance that would be granted if hypothetically doesn't matter because it's just an issue of stormwater management?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, in March, you testified that the redevelopment plan has a requirement for a ten percent publicly accessible open space and that the applicant's proposal intends to provide six percent on site. Is that accurate?
I do not recall. As I was mentioning, I did not review my testimony from March.
Okay. Are you able at all to identify where on the plans that open space is, is set forth?
Um, I would have to go back and look at the plan. The open space is not specific to being impervious. The open space could be, could be pervious or impervious. It doesn't necessarily mean just because it's open space, doesn't mean that it's impervious area.
I understand, but the open, there is a definition in the redevelopment plan of publicly accessible open space. And the applicant, according to your testimony previously, was that six percent of the ten percent that's required is going to be provided on site. And I'm just wanting for the public, if someone can identify for us on the plans, where that six percent is.
Yes, I would prefer to defer that to the architect because the open space is with regard to the building and the building is under the jurisdiction of the architect.
Okay. You also stated on page eighteen that for the most part, this is almost all impervious. Now, if the project would satisfy, let's say the eighty-five percent impervious lot size that's typically required of mixed commercial residential buildings that are found in MX zones, mixed throughout the city. As Lot One was done in the two thousand thirteen redevelopment plan, it was an MX one. Wouldn't it be much easier to meet the ten percent accessible open space?
Um, you know, the redevelopment plan that you're talking about in two thousand thirteen, I'm not familiar with. You're mentioning eighty-five percent, I'm not familiar with. I don't know what, what you're referring to with regard to that. So I, I really can't answer your question.
Okay. Is it accurate to state that you testified on page thirty-one, I'd say at question, line seven through nine, that with the additional loading zones and loading areas and drop off spots, that the applicant is not able to accommodate the required number of shade trees?
As you, as I mentioned, I'm not familiar with the document that you're referring to, and I have not reviewed my previous testimony. With regard to the drop off areas, that is being done as part of a design function as to the way things are in today's society. As we know that there's a lot of uses for, you know, people that are doing DoorDash and Uber Eats and Uber pickups and drop offs. So based upon our working with the city, that's why we're providing those drop offs. So if it has an impact on us not providing the trees, this is not done in a, in a vacuum. We've done this with coordination and working with the city.
And the loading zones?
The loading zones are loading, we, we don't, we have loading for basically driveway accesses for, for loading. The loading zones are really for, you know, drop offs and pickups for, you know, ride shares and deliveries.
So isn't it true that the proposed loading zone areas require a design deviation from the active ground floor requirements set forth in the development plan?
That I'm not sure. I can't confirm or deny that.
Well, I thought that you were testifying to that, that there, that this was one of the design modifications that was required.
Any design modification that I tested by to back in March, you know, was done with the agreement of working with the Department of Engineering as well as the Office of Planning and Design.
Okay. So I just want to basically confirm that when one's justifying the design deviation with the applicant's choice to not comply with another, meaning the design deviation for not supplying the sufficient number of shade trees, and you're justifying that by saying one can't do that because of the loading docks, which is also a design, a design deviation. We're really, we're, we're, in effect, not complying with another simply to provide car drop offs to service a building whose height is being justified as a transit oriented development.
He, he, he did not say that, and that's a conclusory statement. What he stated was that there are a number of issues. There, there were ingress and egresses, there's parking, there's, there's drop offs, there's sight, there's sightline, safety angles. There are a number of issues that impact the ability to put trees in. That was his testimony.
And all of those require a design deviation.
Please don't summarize his testimony incorrectly.
All I'm trying to say is that the applicant is using design deviations to justify other design deviations. That's all. Um, is it accurate to say that when you testified that there is going to be removal of the foundation and that there was further, quote, investigation and documentation of the surrounding area? And that we don't know what we're going to find? Is it accurate to say that you testified to that in March?
As I said, I did not review my testimony from March. It is very possible that I did say that there was, you know, previous structures on the site. So that there is a possibility that there may be foundations and things like that of that nature on the site. But those will all be removed as part of the construction for the new development.
Is there any reason why you didn't inform the board that this is currently an active NJDEP remediation site?
I, I can't speak to that because I am not involved in any, anything with the DEP with regard to this site.
Okay. I'm going to, I mean, again, this is related to your previous testimony as the engineer. In, in March, the attorney for the applicant stated that the applicant would comply with all the conditions set forth in the city's engineering memo of two thousand twenty-five and the city's traffic memo of, the Department of Engineering's traffic memo of two twenty-five. And she referred to your testimony when she said that. Can you just state for the record each of the conditions to which the applicant is complying that was set forth by the engineering department? There's much confusion in these records when decisions are made and they're conditioned on discussions with the board or something that's stated in staff reports. And the public needs to know with clarity, what are the conditions that are actually being imposed by the Department of Engineering? And what are you agreeing to?
I would object. I think this question is, is, is duplicative. The testimony has been entered as to what Mr. Scott believes. If Mr., if Ms. Steinhegen wants to read every line item contained in the engineering report, she's welcome. But I don't believe Mr. Scott needs to, to do that.
Well, somebody on your side has to set forth clearly in the record, what
Pardon me one second, Ms. Steinhegen. Mr. Webster, just read your name into the record when you
Eleanor Webster, I'm co-counsel. I've been announced earlier in the hearing. I just think it's, I don't, I don't believe that Mr. Scott, we've stated, as we've stated in many hearings before this board, that we will comply with all the conditions listed as in the engineering letter. And if Ms. Steinhegen wants to review the report and read every line item in, in the document and included in the resolution, that's up to her. But it's not necessary. It's duplicative and it's a waste of the board's time.
Okay. And I'm just going to state for the record because I'm not going to continue the argument, Mr. Webster. But this is a public hearing and there's a public involved. And when the board agrees or when an applicant agrees to certain conditions set forth in certain reports, it would be very, it would be very important for the public to know what those conditions are and that they be set forth specifically in the resolution. That's all I'm stating. There's lack of clarity here.
I will work with Mr. Beck, I will work with Mr. Beck to ensure that the engineering letter is appended to the resolution so that the board knows exactly what, so that the public knows exactly what has been consented to.
I'm not. I have no further questions for Mr. Scott. I don't know if you want me to just go as you did, Ms. Corilla Perez. You went just through your witnesses. Is that what you would like me to do? Or should we open it up to the public to see if anybody else wants to speak?
Please go on to the next professional, Ms. Steinhegen.
Okay. I just have a very brief for the traffic report for Mr. Polniak. Since. Hello?
Hi.
Oh, hi. Mr. Polniak, I just want to state for the record, you, you did not testify in March, is that correct?
No, I did not.
Okay. And are you the author of the, the traffic report?
Yes, my firm is, and I took part.
Okay, great. So I just have three clarifying questions. How many samples were included in the IT, samples that you took?
Do you mean our traffic counts or our trip generation? Or trip generation projections?
Yes, your trip generation.
We use the Institute of Transportation Engineers data for land use. It was, sorry, high-rise residential with ground floor commercial. So we use that data that they have in their, in their reference.
How many samples were there?
You mean specific data points that the IT had? Yeah, I could find that in the report if you wait a moment. Yeah, number of studies for the morning peak hour. There were three studies and two in the evening.
Okay. So I just would like to know, does the IT consider that number reliable?
Um, well, you know, it's funny you mention that because recognizing that there was a lower amount of studies, we continued to use that data because it was a little bit higher than that for a high-rise facility in a dense urban area. So that's why during my testimony, I had said our analysis is probably pretty conservative because our projections are higher. Had I used the high-rise in a dense urban, you're probably cutting the strip generation down by at least a hundred or so trips. So you know, I, I'll stand by the fact that I believe our study, the findings are extremely conservative.
Okay, um, I'd just like to clarify, did you include the, are you aware that there are two projects currently being built across the street from the Iberia site? At least two projects that are going up?
Uh, I, I do know of one. I, I don't know specifically the names of those projects, but I'm aware of one on the, I believe it's the northwestern corner.
And did you include projections with that new traffic in your traffic generation?
We didn't specifically. I think at the time of the report, we were unaware of those developments, but it's generally why we include, you know, background growth factors to take into account any kind of growth in the area. So using that NJDOT data, we, we expand upon those volumes just to make sure that we do take into account growth in the area.
So you just didn't take into account specifically those projects that have been approved or being built in the area? And they were not included in your analysis of future service level?
Not the, not those two projects, not specifically, no.
Okay. I, last question. My understanding is that you were just really studying phase one of, and I would like to know what your opinion is if with the one entrance in and out of the garage, if phase, if phase two is not, is not completed?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Do you mind repeating that or phrasing it differently? I didn't understand.
My understanding is that your, your report was an assessment basically only of phase one. Is that correct?
Well, it's my understanding that this project on this property is a phase, is a two-phase project as far as construction. So do you mean the, the subject property with the fourteen hundred units or?
Yeah, I, I just was under the impression that you were only looking Yeah, I, I just, uh, was under the impression that you were only looking at with the way we're currently built, which has this, uh, one entrance in an exit, in and in and out of the garage in.
Yeah, our, our, our analysis included the, the full development on this property that includes access along, um, both frontages.
Okay. So I have no further questions for the traffic expert.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Higgins?
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening, Mr. Higgins. Oh, I'm sorry, you're under oath already.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Higgins, did you attempt to design, uh, a building that complied with the required rules rather than requiring so many exceptions or deviations?
Um.
I'm going to object.
You always said attempt.
Conclusory statement, and it's a leading statement, uh, for the witness. I'm going to object. You can answer the question by describing the building you'd built.
We tried to bu- uh, design the best building that met all the requirements of the redevelopment plan as closely as possible and that the, uh, developers', uh, goals and objectives.
Okay. Was there any particular reason why you decided to push the building to the edge of the property? Rather than include what we think are required frontal setbacks for planting and other landscape greenery and the publicly accessible open space?
Uh, the, we do have six percent publicly open space along the perimeter of the building. We tried to maintain the existing street wall that exists there to the extent possible. So there's not little alcoves, um, between adjacent properties.
So you use the existing building that's being destroyed rather than the principal buildings that are still standing to determine, uh, your setback?
No, the buildings that are still standing.
Oh, the buildings that are still standing. So it's your position that they are, the building, the, the buildings on towards Ferry Street that are still standing only have a zero, si- zero setback?
They're primarily on the property line, yes.
Okay. Um, did you consider a design that locates the loading docks, driveways and transformer rooms away from the street as required by the development plan and on the one edge of the site that was not designated for active storefront requirement by the Sixth Amendment? Which was tailored specifically for this project?
Uh, once parking was required, uh, as part of the public benefit, uh, the driveways had to be located off streets. Um, so that was something that was going to be required. The location of things like transformer rooms are sort of directed by the utility company. And, uh, it still has to be finalized in some areas. Those transformers can be located in the sidewalk, but it's strictly at the utility company's discretion. So we tried to plan and identify that, uh, on the building. And we just wanted to make sure there was off-street loading and, uh, for that, so that that can happen off the building and still function as part of the project. So it's adjacent to move-in elevators and the trash rooms and things of that nature.
Um, in your testimony on page sixty-eight, you said the overall goal was to create a very active ground floor facade with retail and uses to provide more eyes, lobby uses to provide more eyes on the street. Can you prove that there's no workable building that was possible within the existing rules to achieve that goal?
We achieved it as closely as possible, uh, to the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do, I have some questions for the planner. Mr. Donahue.
Hi, Ms. Steinhagen.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Okay, so Mr. McDonough, you testified at the last hearing that no, uh, last hearing, no variances were required for this project and that quote unquote, the applicant is following the letter of all zoning controls to a T. Presumably you meant including the redevelopment plan itself. Is that correct?
The redevelopment plan is the zoning regulation that governs this site. So the, the affirmative answer is yes.
Okay. You also acknowledged that certain design waivers were required to construct the project and that they were very, very minor, quote unquote. Is that correct?
That is accurate.
Okay. I assume you also recognize, uh, the standards for the deviation that the burden of proof of meeting all the requirements is on the applicant and its witnesses. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, in the redevelopment plan itself, duh, how does the applicant determine whether an item of relief is considered a variance or a design modification?
Uh, based on the structure of the regulations and it, it, it's deliberate that we don't have all of our regulations in one chapter. We've got use regulations in one, we've got bulk regulations in the other, and we put all the design standards in another. It's very common practice from a planning standpoint.
Okay, you justified the granting of the requested design waiver because they were reasonable and appropriate. Is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, can you tell me where the standard of reasonable and appropriate comes from?
Comes from section fifty-one of the municipal land use law in this particular case subsection B, which is where the, uh, the planning board is authorized to grant site plan approval and bundled in with that and exceptions therefrom. From, from.
Before I get to the actual language of fifty-one B, doesn't section thirteen O in the redevelopment plan itself set forth the basis for modifying the standards set forth? It's on page forty-four of the redevelopment plan.
There with me if you will while I just pull that up on my computer here.
And it states that the app, quote, the applicant can demonstrate extraordinary hardship in the implementation of the standards.
Um, what, I, I'm sorry, Ms. Steinhagen, what page are you referring to? What section?
Forty-four, section thirteen point O entitled Basis for Modifying Standards Set Forth. Oh, se- no, Basis for Modifying Standards, sorry.
Okay, I see that, yes.
So, as you said, the redevelopment plan supersedes the MLUL in this case and the standard set forth there. And so doesn't the standard set forth in thirteen O prevail for design modifications here?
Yeah, I, I would say again, the fact that the redevelopment plan authorizes the planning board to grant site plan approval falls in the, uh, the specific language of section fifty-one. I'm not sure if this section refers to, uh, seeking amendments to the standards. Um, it's unclear.
It's specifically, I'm not going to argue. Um, it reads as it does. Uh, we could go to fifty-one B. Would you be able to read the last line in fifty-five D fifty-one B?
When you say the, when you say the last, I think it's all one big sentence, but I, I can, I can read it.
You, you, you stopped at reasonable and you did not continue thereafter.
Right, okay, is within the, and I'll continue from the word reasonable and within the general purpose and intent of the provisions for site plan review and approval of an ordinance, uh, adopted pursuant to this, if the literal enforcement of one or more provisions of the ordinance is impracticable or will exact undue hardships because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question.
Okay, thank you. Um, you have posited that this application is fully compliant with only very minor design deviations. Hypothetically, if the plan was not.
I don't want any hypothetical questions, Aunt.
Well, I'm going to ask the question and you can object and he doesn't have to answer. I'm just saying hypothetically, if the plan was not compliant with the standard set forth in the redevelopment plan, would the, can the board exercise its discretion to denote? Vote no on the application.
Um, John, do not answer the question.
Okay. Um, when you testified last time, you cited the conclusions of a case called Pe- Pezo Manton. Is that correct?
Correct.
You said essentially that Pezo Manton states that the essence of good planning is not just some vague opinion of a planner, but must be grounded in the provisions of the zoning ordinance or redevelopment plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then in your testimony on page ninety-one, you said, quote, "In terms of the site plan, access, circulation, parking, landscape, lighting, all designed in accordance with sound planning principles." Is that correct?
Yes, I did.
Can you tell us where you find those sound planning principles?
Um, common practice. Um, the, the usual standards, uh, that we planners consider every single day. Uh, adequate access, safe circulation, parking, drainage, grading, uh, safe pedestrian access, vehicular access, turning movements, line of sight, landscaping, lighting, utilities, stormwater management, architectural design, building design, um, uh, building code compliance, uh, open space, um, comfortable living environment.
But as you said, they must, they must be grounded in the zoning ordinance itself or the redevelopment plan. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, uh, yes, that's what the standards are. Again, that, that Pizzo man case, which happened to be a a case that I lived through multiple hearings was an applica- application that did not have a variance and the board denied it because they felt it was not consistent with quote unquote, "good planning." And, uh, again, I'll let the record reflect that that went up to the Supreme Court and they said that's not this discretionary whims of board members is not a reason for denial of, of a variance-free application.
No, discretion must be based on the redevelopment plan and the zoning ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, I just have a last question for us. Can you walk us through the calculation for the payment in lieu of providing the ten percent that's required public accessible open space, assuming that the six percent is on the site?
I can, I cannot. That's, that was not within my charge on this application and I did not review it. The applicant, um, the, the applicant is responding, um, and that can certainly be considered by the board, but I don't know the details.
Okay. I have no further questions for Mr. Donahue.
All right, for Mr. McDonough, and that would be the end of the professionals that, uh, Ms. Corolla Perez and Mr. Webster presented.
Yes.
Yes, but I would like, uh, I believe that you should.
Ma'am, yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
All right, but before we do that, given that we are now at seven forty-seven, um, what I would like to do is for us to have a ten-minute recess so folks can do a bio break or whatever it is that they need to do. Uh, when we come back, uh, the public will have, each person will have three minutes um, to present your question, comments. Uh, we would hope that, um, we're making fresh comments, right? That we're not being repetitive, but that it, each comment would be adding something to, uh, our consideration. I see you, Ms. Corolla Perez.
Uh, no, I just think qual- uh, for clarification, the next section respectfully is for cross-examination of the witnesses.
Okay.
I think, yeah, and when I think what you mentioned was when we go into public section. So I wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Thank you, ma'am.
We, we want to, we want to allow the, the, the other public to be able to ask questions of our witnesses.
Correct, yeah.
So we're going to take a break right now. Secretary, Madam Secretary, we're at seven forty-eight. Um, if we could all return at seven fifty-eight, then we can resume at that time. Um, commissioners, just, uh, turn your cameras off and mute, mute your devices. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Can you hear me, Sister Ruth?
I can hear you now, one second please. All right. One. Two, three. Okay, so we have a quorum, we can resume.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
All right, good evening again, and thank you all for that brief minute of pause. At this moment, what we're going to proceed into is cross-examination of the professionals by the public. So this is not general statements. I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that we're not doing general statements at this time. This is an opportunity for members of the public to cross-examine the professionals who presented earlier this evening. So with that said, if you're interested in cross-examining the professionals as a member of the public, please press star nine or raise your hand. And I see, I see a question on a face, so if you want to ask the question, Commissioner, please do, and we'll have Mr. Beck to clarify.
Okay, so then I bring first person.
Good evening, good evening, Ms. Freeman. Can you turn your camera on and unmute so that Mr. Beck can swear you in?
I don't know if this is working. Can you see me?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Good evening, Ms. Freeman. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Helene Freeman, Fourth Street, Newark, New Jersey. I am an actual Newark, New Jersey resident.
Thank you, and you'll have the opportunity to cross-examine the, any of the witnesses that came prior, and you'll have an opportunity to provide public comment after we're done with the cross-examination.
Okay. All right. Um, let's see. I'd like to talk with the architect.
Good evening, Mr. Higgins.
Hello?
Yes, hi, Mr. Higgins. Um, I have a question. Uh, the general vicinity has a standard of a five-story limit. Um, there have been eyesores that have popped up um, in the east ward uh, that tower over existing buildings, infringing in their air rights, uh, casting shadows, uh, whipping up winds. This just hasn't been taken into consideration uh, the existing residents and the residences in the area. I want to know why are the buildings thirty stories? Is that to benefit the community? Or does that benefit the developers' pockets? Why thirty? Why not five or six?
Well, one, one answer is that the zoning permits thirty-story towers there. Uh, the density and the height comes together hand in hand, and the more density we get there, you add all the benefits of having more people in the area. I know it's not all benefits, but it is beneficial to have more people on the street and it creates a safer type of environment. And the more units in the building allow the 20% of affordable housing to be the highest number possible. The building also provides a lot of commercial retail space, some needed public parking. Uh, so there's disadvantages to large projects and this one's this large because it's permitted in this area. I know that you're saying the neighborhood adjacent to it has lower buildings, but this is close to Penn Station and the city planning developed a redevelopment plan that call for height along this corridor of Market Street and the riverfront. And this is just one of the projects that will fill in and create a, 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 a more vibrant community, I believe.
So safety, not because of increased policing, but safety like herd immunity. So there'll be a herd of more people walking on the streets and that's supposed to make things better. In an overcrowded, already dense community, and we have a large homeless population on the street. So that's supposed to make everything better? Is that, is that to be uh, the understanding of what you just say, stated?
No, I, but I think it will make things better. Uh, I mean, the city and the state has invested a lot of money for this waterfront park. I think the more people that are in this area will make the park feel like a safer place. I think the more people that are living in this community will help the retail, uh, uh, people that have retail businesses there for them to thrive more. And I think right now it's an abandoned site that's dilapidated and creates a unpleasant walking experience overall. I just don't think.
Well, uh, do you live there? Do you walk there, sir?
Yes, sure, several times.
Okay, um, it's not a, a dystopian community. Um, it's abandoned. It was a favored restaurant at one point. And then, uh, the owner got greedy and decided to sell. So it's not like it's a, 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 a crack den, a den of iniquity where drug addicts and uh, random people hang out. So like, uh, you're, I, I, I take umbrage in your description of the area. Um, uh, I have family in the area. Um, I've worked in that area and um, it's not like that, but it's a struggle to find parking. It's a struggle to get close to um, uh, the businesses that you want to frequent and then you want to add more people, uh, cut up the sidewalk. And uh, it's already a urban heat island and so you're gonna have less uh, oxygen-producing trees and less green space because you had to downsize it by four percent to get the maximum uh, um, amount of dollars out of the site, correct? So that's why it's thirty stories. You say because it's allowed. Uh, the city did a, a three sixty because it wasn't supposed to go beyond twelve. And then suddenly, without uh, getting community input, the city advanced the project without the community's knowledge. And then all of a sudden, twelve turned into thirty. So you're saying that the city's malfeasance and um, its ability to manipulate documents is why it's okay for you to do this. So
Mr. Higgins, I'm gonna ask you not to answer that.
Is this for, is this Iberia for, uh, the development is for the community, right? For the men and women who currently live in Newark? This is, this luxury is for us, right?
Ms. Freeman, if you can, um, direct your question to this professional testimony, maybe the facts of his testimony?
Well, that is the facts of his testimony. He just said that, that it's allowed because the city allows it. And, and it was allowed and changed from, from twelve to thirty without community input and uh, the community did protest against it. And then all that was ignored by the, by um, the council. And I, I want to know from the, from the, the architect, who is this being designed for?
The, uh, it's being designed for our client. I just think some of the results of the building will have a practical and, and positive impact on the community as well. And just to the, the heat island effect thing, we are providing green roofs and a lot more greenery than exists currently on the site. Right now, it's a, it's, I think it's mostly blacktop, but broken.
But that's not, yeah, um, the faux pas of the past, the errors of the past. Um, you know, when, when Iberia first came up, uh, heat islands and things of that concern were not a concern. So just doing something a little bit better isn't necessarily something that needs to be lauded and um, uh, just passed through because you want to do something there. So let's, let's not dwell on that. I wanna, um, cause it, it's already been said. Um, you said, oh, well, we're putting it next to the river, the waterfront. Uh, you understand that the waterfront is a super fun site. Right? You, you know that. So there's Agent Orange there. Uh, uh, there's dioxins in, in the water and in the soil. So there's gonna be a one hundred percent abatement of all of that. Correct, sir? Or do I need to speak to your engineer about that?
Um, Mr., 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 Madam Chair, we don't have a question that is within the testimony and within Mr. Higgins' expertise. Off-site environmental conditions are not the purview of, of his presentation.
Well, it should be, sir.
He's the architect.
Madam Chair, if.
Uh, so he's, so I shouldn't go to the architect. I just said that. Perhaps I'll, 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 I'll roll that back and we can talk to your engineer. Because that should be a concern. I would be concerned if I'm buying into this luxury.
My engineer has, has, has no project knowledge with respect to off-site environmental conditions. He has.
And you're the, the developer's attorney.
That is, that is correct.
Uh, so who has the environmental expertise? Who has this information, sir?
This board had, this board does not have environmental jurisdiction. It's preempted by DEP. There's no, this board does not hear environmental issues.
Okay, good. All right, next. So let's go into housing.
Ms. Freeman.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Attorney Beck, what were you saying?
Uh, that we're, we're really in public comments mode here and it's supposed to be cross-examination.
Okay, so.
Specific, can I finish?
Can I, can I, can I finish, please?
Can I finish, please?
Yes, sir.
So I want to make certain that we're focused on the cross-examination of testimony that was previously given. There'll be an opportunity for public comment later on in the meeting, but we have four witnesses that were cross-examined. We have a number of people that probably want to cross-exam, do further cross-examination. So we kind of have to move this along and stick with the format, which currently is cross-examination. So if we could stick to that format, that would be helpful.
Okay, sorry about that, sir. Uh, can I speak with the planner? So I'm leaving the architect alone. Can we go to the planner?
I'm over here, Ms. Freeman.
Hi, how are you, sir? Uh, your, your last name?
It's McDonough.
McDonough, Mr. McDonough. I want to ask about you're only doing twenty percent of the units labeled affordable. What is the AMI?
Um, that testimony was on the record last time and I don't want, I don't want.
The AMI is, um, consistent with Newark's uh, zoning ordinance. It's five percent of the units will be at forty percent AMI, five percent of the units will be at sixty percent AMI, and ten percent of the units will be at eighty percent AMI.
So if the AMI from the city is incorrect, then you're basing it on the incorrect data that was given to you by the city of Newark, correct?
It's not incorrect, ma'am. Um, it's not citywide data, as you know, it's countywide data. And I, and we understand the argument with respect to Newark's AMI and the county's AMI, but.
Okay.
The units that we use are the county's AMI.
Fifty percent of the units labeled affordable? Because, um, are these units for Newark residents, sir?
This is not a question for our planner. This is a question for your city council members.
No, it's for the planner. Uh, uh, cause the city council doesn't know about family-sized units. Does, does the city council have, um, work for the developer? I thought the city council worked for us, sir. For the residents.
That's, that's not what I said. What I said is that the, you're, we're, we're trying to answer your questions, but the questions you're asking are not questions that the planner has knowledge to answer. You're saying.
He should, uh, if, uh, because, and why should he, sir? He should, uh if uh cuz and why should he, sir? Because I went to Rutgers School for Planning as well. And that if I'm working on a development and I have the site plans and um subdivision information, you should be able to tell me about the family-sized units. How many family-sized units and what type of families are they being designed for? Because I heard, and I don't know if it was the planner, who talked about commuting. So that you don't need to provide onsite parking because the commuters, commuting from where? Is this development for, is this a commuting luxury development, a thirty-story development for outsiders? Or are Newark residents allowed to be in these units? And um will these units uh uh take Section Eight? A planner should know that.
I I Ms. Freeman, I think I can answer that. This is what we call an inclusionary housing development. It is open to all people. This is not an exclusionary development. It's it's open to families. It's open. It's not an age-restricted community. Um it has income-restricted units as well. Two hundred and eighty, I believe, is the number. That's unheard of in New Jersey. We're putting people of, we call them of L M I, low moderate income right next to this great river, great right next to this uh great feature. That is the reason why Newark is there in in the first place. And also the greatest transit uh train station in in all of New New Jersey is right there as well. It's good planning to put people around those great amenities. It's good.
Yes, sir, it is. It's always good to have public transportation for the public. No one said, no one, no, no one's going to differ with that. But my my question is, why not fifty percent affordable? Because Newark, because this is for Newark, right? We're doing it in Newark. The great amenities of Newark, but Newark needs sixteen thousand, and that's lowballing. Sixteen thousand truly affordable units.
The pro- the project doesn't have, the project doesn't have financing available to to subsidize the units sufficiently to have fifty percent affordable. That's the answer.
Even if they were taking and made a concerted effort to allow Section Eight.
Even if that's the case, you have to understand affordable housing. Affordable housing generates, rents generate about a hundred fifty thousand dollars per unit. It costs about five hundred fifty to six hundred thousand dollars per unit to build one of these units. There's not a three hundred fifty thousand dollar subsidy enough to cover every one of the units. So the math that you're asking for is impractical. The math that is required to make these units work is substantial tax abatement, uh redevelopment area bonds and aspire tax credits and light tech tax credits. There are a number of subsidies that have to be layered together to make even the twenty percent work. So your fifty percent is un- is 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 fis- is fiscally ridiculous.
I beg to differ. I beg to differ.
And and if I if I can, mister back just to supplement, and I'm co-counsel with Mister Mister Webster, that's actually, you know, outside of the purview of the board. We're talking about I Z O and compliance with I Z O. So I just want the record to reflect that this question exceeds that.
Thank you, Jen. I appreciate you getting me back on.
Okay, so, all right, so let's not necessarily talk about uh the fact that it doesn't really give the true benefit um that that area in Newark really needs. Uh let's go to, you know, filling your coffers, but let's talk about family-sized units. Because on average.
Freeman, I think.
Residents have more than three children. And I I'm saying that like you're maxing out at three bedrooms.
Yes. That is the state, that is the state requirement.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Thank you, Mister Webster. The next person who would like to cross-examine. Remember, this is cross-examination of the professionals. This is not the time for public comment. Ms. Freeman, we thank you for your thoughtful input. Uh raise your hand for the the next person who would like to cross-examine the professionals, please.
Mister Cohen, if you could come up with me, so you can be sworn in.
Yep, hello.
Good evening, Mister Cohen. Mister Beck.
Here we go. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mister Cohen. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Great, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Arnold Cohen. I reside at two seventy-two Walnut Street in the city of Newark.
Yes, sir. Uh Mister Cohen, who would you like to cross-examine?
Okay, uh can I speak to Mister Scott?
Let's see. Here he is.
So my understa- there's there's currently monitoring wells on the site uh to monitor pollution there. How is that going to be addressed during construction? In terms of when the cap is put on, not disturbing the monitoring wells and continuing uh after construction to be sure that we're monitoring the groundwater.
Okay, so yes, uh in terms of the monitoring wells, typically they're done to monitor the groundwater and test it from an environmental perspective. Uh I am not involved with the environmental aspect of this project. So I cannot specifically state what's gonna happen after the project, once the project uh goes under construction, how they're gonna continue to monitor the the groundwater. I can't, I can't testify to that.
I I apologize for for asking the wrong person. Is there somebody who can address that?
Uh unfortunately, not here at this hearing as that this is not typically part of a um, you know, planning board hearing. Uh this falls under the jurisdiction of uh Department of Environmental Protection and whatever L S R P that is assigned to this project. So this is typically not um discussed at a planning board meeting.
Let me ask a another question then. Uh zoning calls for ten percent green space on site. Is there a reason why this project cannot accommodate that?
Um this is something that was kind of te- was testified to by the uh architect uh previously. Uh so I'd like to kind of defer to him as he's uh this is part of his building and that's where the the green spaces is part of the building.
So we can, can we hear from the architect then?
Yes, the um the reduction in outdoor space is a direct result of the retail being uh expanded out. So there's two things we're providing. We're providing parking, which requires a certain dimension inside the building. We want to screen all that parking with viable retail that has a certain depth requirement to it. And that encroached a little bit, that re- that a lot required us sort of to use most of the property up to the property line. And then we just stepped back um at different areas to create outdoor space, primarily along Market Street where there's a long sort of linear landscape band. Uh and we also added some green walls and uh different things to help green green up the area and make it a little bit more pleasing aesthetically.
Yeah, I I I would contend that you're really creating a have and have not by restricting the the public, the amount of public space there. Um i- is there a reason why there is, this is my understanding is that the height was extended because this is transit-oriented development. And why are we having parking except for one person, the councilman, asking for it? I, as a resident, wasn't asked whether I wanted parking there. There's lots of parking lots in the area.
We we had two neighborhood meetings and parking was a main uh requirement or a request from the community that we did take into account and tried to maximize it as best as possible. It's just the nature of um even so close to the major transportation uh uh point at Penn Station. People in New Jersey, a good number of them still have cars and uh it's it's an amenity for some of the building residents uh to provide it.
Right, but but it's taking away from as a result, we're having a lack of trees, a lack of open space.
One of the reasons also, I think, planning was okay with us reducing it and providing retail was that we do have that waterfront park there. That's a large open space directly across the the street from from this project. So it it was just a trade-off, one thing rather than other. So the retail space in this case seemed more important. The community wanted large retail spaces, um so they might be able to get some kind of urgent care center or something else. That was part of the discussion that we got from the community, and we tried to accommodate that as best as possible.
So so you are you providing easy access for people to cross over Raymond Boulevard to get to the to park, which was created with public funds? And so it seems like this is, yeah, we should be getting something from the developer as a trade-off of what our public funds created in terms of open space.
The developer doesn't really have the ability to do that without other agency approvals. But they would certainly be in their interest and they'd be probably supportive of that uh happening. The more access to the waterfront, the better for everyone, I think.
And and then how do you rationalize the ninety-eight percent impervious uh project with this being the heat island effect? I mean, I understand you're saying that the stormwater will be collected. But yet that doesn't address that the impervious structure, the impervious project um just adds to the environmental issue of the heat island effect.
Well, I'll talk about the heat island and maybe uh Phil could talk about the impervious surface. I guess there's no stormwater drainage on the site currently. It all just spills right off. It's a hundred percent impervious, I suppose. We're adding green roofs on every roof level throughout the building. Uh and there's also a stormwater uh component that that I think uh Phil could probably expound on more than I can. So I think it's an improvement overall, the existing site condition from a heat island effect and also from a stormwater uh effect.
I I I would contend if you had o- more green space on the ground, it would be much better benefit for the public than what's on your rooftop. I'll I'll let I'll let him answer. I'm sorry.
Right, that was just for heat island effect and some stormwater.
Yes, uh with regard to um the impervious coverage, um you know, the impervious coverage is really about stormwater runoff. And we are collecting all of the stormwater uh on the site uh as required by the city's ordinance. Uh we're taking all of that runoff and we're putting it into a deti- detention system and we're reducing it.
I I I understand that. My question was around the heat island effect. That, yeah, you can you can address all the stormwater perfectly, but it's still not addressing the fact that we don't have those shade trees to offset the heat island effect.
Yes, so as part of this uh project, you know, we mentioned that we are planting as many trees as we possibly can based upon uh you know, the site conditions. Uh with regard to that, you know, where we're not able to plant those trees, we are um donating to add donating uh or should I say contributing to the uh the tree fund uh which uh I I can't recall the cost of each tree that we're um submit uh uh donating for. But um the these trees will be planted um within the community uh within the, you know, the total area of the city, not just in this particular area. So as I also testified to uh previously, I've been seeing a lot of trees being planted uh throughout the Ironbound. We know that the Ironbound um, you know, has a lot of issues with regard to not having a a large tree canopy. And uh they're starting to plant them, you know, not just in the specific area of development, but also throughout the whole community. So.
I I can, I can show you blocks and blocks where there's no trees and people have taken away the tree ho- holds to even enable trees to be planted. And you have a lot of parking in that air, right around that area. But again, leads as no impervious circus as all the parking lots in the area. And the Iberia site, the other part of the Iberia site, which again, is an impervious surface.
Yeah, so there's a number of areas throughout the whole city where there's not a lot of trees. And you know, just based upon, you know, my experience previously working with the city. Um you know, the, you know, Mayor Baraka has an initiative to plant uh trees throughout the city. And I I'm seeing it taking place and that's being done, um you know, based upon the fact that, you know, developers are contributing to this tree fund. So if it wasn't for that, um you know, there probably wouldn't be any trees being planted. So um you know, we're happy to work with the city's arborists to to put any more additional trees that we can on site. But wherever we cannot, uh there will be trees uh planted throughout the city.
Yeah, the arborist is doing a great job. At one point, Newark was considered a a tree city under Mayor Sharp James and uh engineer Frank Sudol. And we we've gone very far away from that, but that's a whole other topic. So that that's uh, that's it for my questions.
Thank you, Mister Cohen. If you could, Madam Secretary, if you could bring in the next person, I believe that would be James Sinclair. Good evening, Mister Sinclair. If you could please um turn your camera on so that you can be sworn by Mister Beck. We can hear you.
Okay, good evening.
So your camera's not available?
No, I'm sorry, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mister Sinclair. Uh do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Name is James Sinclair, one one eight zero Raymond Boulevard in Newark.
And this is cross-examination. So uh who would you like to uh cross-examine?
I have some questions related to the um the traffic study and and site plan related to the traffic.
All right, Mister Polenek is available.
So my first question is about the driveway located along Congress Street, which is shown as very close to Market Street. Um looking at it, it seems that if just two eastbound vehicles on Congress Street are waiting to turn onto Market, they're gonna completely block the access to the garage entrance. So if, say, a resident comes from Market Street, turns onto Congress and wants to enter the garage, they're gonna block westbound traffic and create a backup. So my questions are, how is this modeled in the traffic study? Do you use a dynamic travel, traffic modeling program that accounts for this kind of behavior? Or is it just based on inputting um into the I T E formula?
No, what we use to model the traffic is the Synchro software, it's called. Uh that takes into account the um the roadway network system, all four intersections uh as well as the dri- uh five intersections, if you include Downing, as well as the driveways as well. So it is a um it is an all-encompassing model that includes uh activity at all those locations. So it's not necessarily like a stagnant thing. It does take into account the proximity of intersections.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I misheard. Um it does or doesn't take into account?
It it does. It takes into account proximity of all four intersections and driveways, correct?
Okay, did the model show any delays there? Someone sort of blocking the entire street, waiting to get into the driveway?
You know, we had decent levels of service at that location. Um but I don't necessarily disagree with you that if one or two car, I guess maybe two to three cars queue, uh it could be blocked. I I don't have queuing data with me, but we were getting a level of service C, which is, which is pretty good because we have there's a um, you know, just a right turn movement. So it's really just opposed to the eastbound Market Street uh traffic. So I I don't anticipate it being um something that occurs, you know, over the course of the day. Maybe during the, you know, if a if a a platoon of vehicles show up at one time, it could be something that happens. But uh overall, um you're not a consistent issue.
So the previous testimony, I don't think it was you, I think it was someone else, but stated that the driveway design, that a waiver was granted. I was just wondering who granted that waiver?
Uh yeah, I may have to uh ask another witness to uh to help me on that one.
This board granted a waiver in its initial um hearing. Um the engineering uh testimony was produced by our engineer. Uh testimony was given by your city engineer, Mr. Trev Conte. And the board heard that evidence and voted to give a waiver uh during our previous hearing in March.
Okay, in this case, since Market Street is a county road, uh do they have to be involved with the process at all if the traffic backs up onto their road?
Um yes, there's an approval for any uh building that fronts a county road from the county planning board.
And that's a separate process from this?
Yes.
Okay. Um then I had a question about the um Jefferson Street site. So there is, you know, with the meeting notes, there was a Newark Department of Engineering memorandum um after the previous meeting that called for some changes to the site plan. Basically, the curb ramps that were shown didn't meet Pro-WAG standards. Were those changes made? Because I I don't see them in the files that are available uh tonight. So for example, um the site plan I see shows a single crosswalk at the corners and Pro-WAG requires two, one per crosswalk, not a diagonal one.
Yeah, that may be a question for.
Yes, i- if I could just interject, um the plans that. Plans that we're discussing today, or should I say, um, you know, we're working on or discussing the plans that were submitted as part of our initial submission. Uh, we have not submitted any revisions, um, because we knew that we were having this remand hearing. So we are, you know, working off the plan uh that was initially submitted, uh, all of the comments that were uh submitted. You know, from the uh departments of engineering, uh, planning and zoning and water and sewer. Will be addressed in the subsequent submission that we will make, but uh we we have not submitted any of those drawings. Or should I say, we have not submitted any drawings that show those revisions as of yet.
So the board won't see those before they vote?
Well, I mean, w- we know what the, you know, what the requirements are or the requests that have been from the city departments. Uh, and we will address those, uh, and they will be conditions of the approval.
Okay, so on the Jefferson Street side, um, across from Downing Street, there's a loading dock zone. Which is where a missing crosswalk would be, which is one of the requirements. So that seems like a pretty large change, correct? The loading dock will have to have to be moved?
I'm sorry, you said on the Jefferson Street side, a a loading zone?
Yeah, so right sort of across from where Downing Street terminates, um. There's one crosswalk shown, the the review requires two, and if you were to place the second one, it would go right where that loading dock is. So that's a pretty substantial change, right?
Um, I I don't think so. I'm looking at a plan that was, you know, that was initially submitted and they're asking for a crosswalk that. Crosses across uh goes across Jefferson Street. Uh, it's not a loading zone. It's, you know, it's the intersection with um between.
So it shows, yeah, it shows one crosswalk on the old plant, but there needs to be two, one on each corner. So if you install the second one, that feeds right into the loading dock. From what I can tell.
Okay, yes, I see what you're saying. Yes, we can make an adjustment for that. That that shouldn't be a problem. We we can adjust for that. Either either with moving the crosswalk or maybe making an adjustment to the loading, so.
Well, because the crosswalk can't move, it's got to be at the corner, so.
Well, it'll be at the corner, but it may be able to shift just a little bit, but we'll do that in accordance with the ADA regulations.
Okay. Um, and then similar to this, the initial review required the plan to show bicycle parking. Since we don't see that, where is the bicycle parking? The interior bicycle parking going to be located?
Uh, the bicycle parking will be inside the building. Um, I'll let um, uh, Mr. Higgins uh discuss where that is located.
Yeah, there's four interior bike uh parking rooms in the basement of the building. I think there's three hundred and twenty uh total bike parking spaces.
So how do uh to get to those spaces? Is it going down the garage ramp or?
You go down the garage ramp or down the elevator. The service elevator will go right to that rooms.
Okay. Um, another question about the driveways and loading zones, we sort of touched on this before, but I I didn't quite hear the right answer. So there's. Separate loading docks and garage entrances. Did the developer look at having interior zoning, basically having trucks go in and out? Sort of, why why is there, why is the loading split up from the driveway entrances creating so many curb breaks? In the sidewalk.
I'm not sure if I if I could answer that question. I think it just has to do with getting the um, the the parking garage configuration. Uh, it's challenging to drive a large trucks through the parking garage. So it, the closest it is to the exterior, the uh more functional. And the better height you can have in the loading dock.
Okay. Um, in terms of the curb loading zone, so the plan suggests that there's basically four different lobbies. I see like four mail and four package rooms. How do delivery companies know where to go and where to stop if there's only one loading zone?
There'll be a concierge and building maintenance, which will uh establish the the routing for that. But basically, there's um. And this is sort of showing the, in a two-phase type of build out, at some point, there will basically be two, probably two lobbies, one on each street.
Instead of four?
Right, they'll probably be.
All right, um, in the parking lot design, looking at the basement plan, the the bottom right corner, there's sort of. Four spaces that are at the end of a road, doesn't seem to have the right access required to turn in and out. Is that accurate?
Um, in the bottom right corner?
Yep.
Yeah, we left some extra room there so a K-turn can kind of happen. Typically, these would be assigned spaces. Um, but we can, we can look at that. I mean, I think we went through this with engineering already. But if there's any spaces that are substandard, we can make the correction. I think we have the flexibility in the in the floors area.
All right, um, a garage safety feature was mentioned regarding pedestrians. Does that mean like those audible alarms every time a car comes in and out?
Uh, typically, it's like a flashing light at the door, the garage door, so it alerts pedestrians that someone's uh, that a vehicle is backing out. But there might be also an audible one if required by the uh ADA.
So how does that affect the neighbors across the street that will be hearing that throughout the day?
I think it's just, I'm not sure, the neighbors directly across the street on Jefferson. Uh, it would probably be something that's kept at a low decibel and maybe close to the ground that just uh, there would have to just be an audible study about that. So it doesn't spread to the neighbors and become a nuisance.
Okay. Um, many delivery people use bikes. Is bicycle parking being provided along the sidewalk? If so, how many spaces and how does it affect the width of the sidewalk?
I think there is bicycle parking on the sidewalk. I could, I forget, Phil, exactly, but um, I think, I think there is some bicycle parking.
Um. Can't recall whether or not we had bicycle parking. Um. I think we would be able to put something um without it impeding the the walkway, the sidewalk with. Um, we have to maintain a minimum of five feet clear for pedestrians. So, you know, if there's an opportunity to put some type of uh outside parking near the uh, the lobbies areas, I I think, you know, we we'd be amenable to that.
So in terms of that minimum, we talked, touched upon it previously, but as you said, the minimum required by the law is five feet. But the Newark River Public Access Development Plan requires twelve feet. So that's a, that's a major difference. Uh, can you explain again sort of why you're going, why you're ignoring what the access into redevelopment plan calls for, for twelve feet?
So this is something that was worked out with the um, the 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 planning, office planning and zoning. Uh, we're providing um, you know, twelve feet where we can. Uh, in some instances, we're going down to five feet foot walkway so that we can provide additional planting areas for trees. Um, you know, anything else, um, you know, that we're doing is basically, as uh was mentioned before, is a trade off from what. Uh, the city officials had uh requested. So uh, in some areas, yes, we have less than five feet because we're putting trees. In another area, we're having less because we have a drop off area. Uh, so that's the reason why we have, uh, you know, the, you know. I should say less than what the redevelopment plan is calling for. And this was something that was worked out with the city. Uh, not just done arbitrarily based upon what we wanted to do for the project, but based upon what we thought, or should I say what the city. Uh, thought would would be best for the community.
Okay, so that, that's good, sort of, at least to my next question, which was touched upon by the last gentleman about the public space being replaced with parking. Um, a statement was made that this was requested at a public meeting. I was wondering, so how many people made that request as a percentage of area residents? To use parking instead of public space?
I I can't speak specifically to how many people made that request. We've had, uh, we had at least two public meetings uh on this project. Uh, I was not at the first one, but I was at the second one and one of the major concerns was uh, was parking. So, you know, the developer uh definitely took that into uh consideration. And is providing a hundred and fifty parking spaces that's going to be available to the community. Uh, whereas, you know, no parking was required at all for this project. So um, I feel like. It's not necessarily what I feel. I think, you know, the the community, you know, and asking for the parking uh is is getting the parking. So uh, I I think that that would be a a a pretty fair and equal trade off in terms of uh, you know. Their request versus uh not providing any parking for the project whatsoever.
Well, the redevelopment plan required a lot of public meetings as well, right? So when the public asked for ten percent. You know, wasn't that more people who were asking for that versus people who showed up at these two random meetings?
Well, like I mentioned, I I wasn't at the first public meeting, um, but I was at the second public meeting and and parking was definitely uh. One of the things that was requested.
Is there a number you can put to that? Like, how many people said there's got to be parking here?
No, I I could never give you a specific number as to how many people there were. Many people at the meeting as well as um, you know, people from the city. Um, you know, city representatives as well as the, you know, councilmen and of the of the area of the ward. So um, you know, it was uh open public meeting and it was, you know, they made very clear. That um, parking was one of the major considerations and we made sure that we uh tried to address it best we could with this, with this design.
Okay, but no representative poll, no kind of study, just sort of people who are allowed at a meeting?
Chris Sinclair, he couldn't, um, I think he answered that question the best that he could. Is, do you have another question that you would like to raise?
I do have just a couple of follow ups on that. Um, just as a comparison, do we know what percentage of area residents own a vehicle?
I don't know that number, no.
Do we have any idea of those that own a vehicle, what their income is sort of compared to the population at large, basically? Are they representative?
I I'm gonna just interject that that's not an appropriate question for Mr. Scott, who's an engineer.
Okay, is there someone else who would be better best to answer that?
I, if you can rephrase the question, I mean, restate the question.
Um, just, it was two parts, sort of what percentage of residents in that area own a vehicle and what their average income is sort of compared to the population at large in Newark.
So the income question, I don't think falls within the purview here of anyone who has that information. This, we're, that's. Uh, uh, information that no one would have as it relates to how many folks in the neighborhood. I'm not sure, Mr. Scott certainly wasn't the right person. I'm not sure if our traffic um engineer has any suggested numbers, uh, projected numbers. But um, fortunately, I don't believe there was a count that was required, um, or there's that public information.
Okay, just to clarify, the reason I ask it is because, you know, for trading off public space, I think it's important to know who's getting to use it. Um, if this is being considered public space, the the parking spots. So then I just have a final question. Is a restroom being provided for the run, front desk and security staff? I don't see one in the plans. Again, I'm not sure who that question goes to.
I'm sorry, oh, a front what? I apologize.
Uh, just a restroom for the front desk staff and security staff.
Oh, Mr. Higgins, who's our architect?
Yeah, sorry.
It's fine. I just wanted to make sure I directed.
Yes, there there are restrooms uh for the uh, the staff and the uh, the concierge.
Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sinclair. Um, I see Mr. Jogo two.
Mr. Niablade, if you could come off of me and turn your camera on so you can be sworn in.
Trying to turn my camera on is not allowed.
There you are. Good evening, sir.
I am.
All right.
Good evening. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Niablade, I go go two, uh, sixty-two Haddon Terrace, Newark, New Jersey. Uh, my question is for the uh, traffic uh expert, Mr. Polonyak. I hope I. Pronounced that correctly.
Yeah.
Well, I know how it is, so you know, I'm.
Lot of wrong.
Uh, I just wanted to know, uh, what days and times did you do your uh, your traffic studies?
Sure. Yes, I know we did our counts over at Downing on November eleventh of this year. Um, that was a Tuesday and our initial counts at the surrounding intersections. Um, those were done back in um, February, also a Tuesday, February sixth of two thousand twenty-four.
Are you um? Are you aware of the alternate side of the street uh parking requirements in that area?
Uh, I know there is signage for um, you know, those parking regulations. I don't know specifically uh what they are.
Okay, cuz if if you did it on a day where the alternate side of the street parking requirements. Were in effect, could that skew your results a bit?
Um. I don't necessarily know if 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 parking regulations change in May, because people may be looking for parking in a different location. Uh, I'll say that we had done some additional uh counts at Downing, some updated counts and as well as um. Our our warrant study to look at the one intersection. So we do have some comparative data on other days and they were um. All within the same ballpark generally, so there were no drastic uh changes from the, from the multitude of counts that we had taken. So. Nothing glaring that I saw in our data.
And what what times of day did you do the uh, the counts?
Yeah, we generally look at uh morning and evening peak periods. It's usually when roads are most congested. So it was seven to nine in the morning and. Uh, four to six thirty in the evening.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
We have Miss Yvette, if you could come off of me and turn your camera on.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Miss Yvette.
Good evening. Uh, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yvette Rosario, R O S A R I O, and the address is fifty-four Folk Street in Newark.
Thank you.
So I had a similar question about the traffic. Um, when I first started listening in the meeting, I heard the date of Wednesday, October twenty-third. Was that one of the days of the traffic studies?
Uh, that was the date our uh report was published.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
And then you mentioned November eleventh of this past year?
Correct, yep.
Okay, I think that might have been Veterans Day for, so there might have been a little less traffic than there would have been usually. Um, cuz there would have been less people commuting to work. Um. Okay, so I just wanted to check on the date. And then um, for the parking, um. There is a hundred fifty spaces, public parking spaces, and the rest is for the residents. Um. How? How do we, like, how did you determine the number of spaces for residents? Versus public spaces and versus the total parking spaces available? And I'm sorry, this was mentioned earlier. I was driving, so.
No, that's okay. Uh, I I can't address that comment as far as um, the delegation between public and residential, but perhaps uh someone can help me out.
Yeah, I I I'm gonna direct us to uh Mr. Higgins, cuz I think the testimony in March. Some kind of discussed a little bit how the configuration led to this. Uh, Mr. Higgins was our architect?
Yeah, so there's the six hundred and twenty cars is sort of a result of a combination of things. It was the two community meetings that we had. And getting feedback from the public regarding parking requirements and concern about parking. Uh, and then the owner had their own uh requirements. For fourteen hundred units, they thought that number was about appropriate. And then the city also had a requested. Uh, the city came to us, I believe, with the uh one hundred and fifty for public parking. So those are kind of how the numbers came together. And then there's all the constraints of the building's size. You can only fit so many parking spaces in so many levels. So that it all kind of came out to, that was sort of the happy uh place where we landed.
Okay, so it's the assumption that not all the units will have um cars?
I think that's the assumption. I mean, the the redevelopment plan and the zoning requires zero parking because it's proximity to Penn Station. So all the parking we provided is above the minimum that's required. And it's just sort of finding the balance between really what the demand is and not trying to build too much parking cuz it's expensive to build. But building enough to satisfy the uh, what they anticipate to be the demand.
Okay, no, I'm just, as a resident and, you know, somebody who drives by there every day, I am concerned about the volume of. Cars, increase in volume of cars and emergency vehicles getting through the area. And I know, you know, that's that's beyond. Your, your part of the development, but it's just something, you know, to keep in mind, um, that that is a real issue. Uh, with emergency vehicles trying to get through that area. That was all my questions. Um, thank, and you know, again, going back to November eleventh, that count might have been. Lower than it usually is for that as they.
No, you may be right. I understand. We had some counts at some other additional intersections and they were kind of similar. So nothing was like, like I said, nothing glaring, but. So nothing was like, like I said, nothing glaring between our, I think we had at least um five counts at five locations plus. Another count was done over the course of a day, so um, no, it's not like anything popped off where. You know, that intersection was any lighter on that on that November day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosario.
We have Mr. De Silva, you could turn on your camera and come off of me so you can be sworn in.
Good evening, Mr. De Silva, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Brendan De Silva, thirty-five Union Street, Newark.
Good evening, Mr. De Silva, who was it that you would like to cross-examine?
I would like to cross-examine, I find him here amongst the gentleman here. The first gentleman that spoke, having difficulty finding him now. Believe not the city engineer, some of the public works.
What's the question with regards to?
Okay, yeah, so in regards to, he stated that he never, he's he lives in the Ironbound or the East Ward and he's not familiar with the area flooding. This is interesting cuz, you know, the area like especially particularly this area, like this section of the Ironbound, it floods very often. Even with like moderate to heavy rain rainfall will flood.
So that would be Mr. Scott.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so Mr. Scott, can you speak to that? You mentioned that you you're not familiar of this here, like the Ironbound flooding in your time, but it floods. Very like relatively often, even like infrastructure issues, but just, you know, no real green space to absorb it.
Yes, so what I was talking about, I wasn't talking about the Ironbound as a total as a whole, because yes, the Ironbound does have issues of flooding. Uh, I've been living in the Ironbound since two thousand fifteen, two thousand fifteens, and yes, I've been experienced flooding myself. There's no flooding in this specific area in the uh in the immediate area of the project. With regard to um, you know, intense rainfall, um, you know, I, as I mentioned. You know, in my initial testimony, I previously served as the city's director of engineering, so I'm very familiar with the areas where there is flooding. Uh, this specific area uh does not have flooding and what we are doing as part of this project is we are providing stormwater management. So that it lessens the impact on uh any of the city's infrastructure for other areas which it may potentially flood. So that's what I mentioned when I said that, you know, that, you know, there there is some flooding, I wasn't speaking speaking specifically to the Ironbound as a whole. Because yes, there are issues, uh, I've witnessed it many times, but not in this immediate area.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, that's my last question for you, um, for a moment here, and then Mike Higgins. I may, he's the architect, yes?
Yes, hi.
Okay, so the question, um, actually funny enough, um, the question when you talk about the the tree, uh, she uh tree shade committee. Or sorry, the tree shade fund and not being able to meet it. The, do you, are you familiar at all with like, I believe the contribution to the tree fit, the tree committee that you guys mentioned is only about like. I think it's about like fifteen hundred dollars a tree to like partake, it's like two thousand dollars a tree. So for, it just, it is hard for me to understand, maybe you can enlighten me, you know, you're building fourteen hundred units. Thirty, I live actually funny enough in uh the currently the largest building in the Ironbound, which is fifty-five Union Street, it's, I believe, thirteen stories. He like they have, they won awards for environmental, the green roof, the whole nine green wall, et cetera. The, what I'm trying to understand is, you guys have fourteen hundred units and I believe you guys said about seventeen trees, right? But for right now in my our building, we have about, I wanna say sixteen trees, eighteen trees. For much smaller space, it feels like, so I'm just trying to understand the concept here. Perhaps maybe you can enlighten me, is it common practice that in the event that a developer cannot match the tree shade requirement, this kid's thing was thirty odd trees? Instead of just contributing like generally to a tree like fund of like, you know, fifteen hundred dollars, let's call it. Times like fifteen hundred, maybe like thirty, I don't know, it's thirty grand, twenty grand, whatever that my number number is. Instead of that, would it be possible to ensure that a developer commits to planting trees directly in the Ironbound? Which I believe is the second worst tree canopy city in the, sorry, Newark, which is the second worst city in the country. Which of which the Ironbound is the worst tree canopy for a tree cut for tree shade coverage. Would that be possible? Would the developer entertain that? How would that work, et cetera?
Yeah, I mean, I I I. That's not a question that Mike is qualified to answer, but the answer is is no. We, the 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 developer would work with the city and the the administration comes up with the um with the with the plan.
So, okay, no, thank you, so if the administration basically says, hey, you just have to contribute this check, so let's call it twenty grand, thirty grand, whatever the tree contribution is. The fourteen hundred units, hey, just, you know, twenty grand. So that's like the gift take, right? And there's a lot of gift takes, I understand. But then the developer cannot be put in a position where he is then said, hey, we particularly want, because this is such a like environmentally contested area. We particularly want you to go above and beyond and plant trees specifically in this area, that would not be something the developer could be forced to do.
Um, so I I I think that your question is is. Um, it's 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 not artfully counterformed, right?
Yeah, clearly is.
As 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 you've stated, that there was lots of put some calls in a conversation with respect to how a deal gets ultimately done. Right, we came in initially with a plaza that was completely green and completely tricked out. The community said they don't want that, they don't want Congo Street blocked, the traffic is important, right? So, but we also want a hundred fifty parking spaces, so um, you know, there became a conversation around that. You say, well, who had the conversation? The councilman, the mayor, um, the planning official, so we're reacting to not just. People in a community meeting, we're reacting to the lead, the city's leadership as well. So when you start to talk about these other issues, you know, there's lots of issues, right? So if the city says to us, you know, we're gonna have a community benefit agreement um at the end of the day, right? So there's gonna be um some dollars that go back and forth between the city and the developer. So all these things are still in flux, but they're not kind of really the province of this board, Newark professionals that are part of this conversation today.
Yeah.
Okay, very helpful. Okay, thank you so much, uh, one more question for uh Mike. Mike, one of the challenges we have here in the Ironbound are first responders, there's really no outfitted space. For the infrastructure when it comes to firefighters, for example, would a building like this be able to house, let's say, a fire uh fire department?
I I don't understand the the question, I apologize, if you're asking hypothetically, just this is Jen Corillo, just clarifying. Are you asking hypothetically, would a fire department be able to utilize any space in this as like? Like a station, is that the question?
Anything like this.
Oh, I don't, I'm not sure, uh, it wasn't designed that way, Mr. Higgins?
Well, it would have to be designed, I mean, there is large spaces that could be a local fire station possibly. But it's not designed uh for it right now, it's designed to be standard sort of, they have very uh specific requirements, of course.
Okay, no worries, I only ask because the two nearest fire stations I'm aware of are so outdated and are currently under uh construction. And I think with, you know, the fourteen hundred units coming in to service this, I I don't know where the fire uh fire fire department would come from. And with so many other buildings, just and uh to just clarify one, same, I believe the, I don't know if it was a. Who said it, but when it comes to the buildings being built, it's not just two buildings being built, there was even just another bu- building approved, just one block away. I think it's another eighty units being built, so I think the question I would have to the traffic advisory. Oh, I forget, I I once again, I apologize, I lost track of names. How do you go about? I know you have your models, but with so much rampant development happening in the Ironbound. Even what was approved like in the past like ninety days and what's slated to be built over the next like year to two years. I I honestly, I am like in favor of the just less parking and less cars because the Ironbound is so congested, it can take you twenty minutes to get out. So the idea of putting in six hundred more cars, how do you guys, to artfully craft my question? How do you take into consideration the new buildings are being proposed within a few walking blocks of this project? When it comes to vehicles and traffic?
Yeah, like I said earlier, our report takes into account a certain growth factor. So we take the volumes that are along the roadway and we bump them up by a two percent increase over a couple of years for the growth. So that takes into account some surrounding area development, make sure that traffic is just not stagnant in the area. Like I said, the volumes in our report are pretty. Pretty conservative because uh what we see is the ratio of um, you know, parking spaces to vehicles exiting, say, in the morning commuter. Hour is usually somewhere along a quarter of a third of the vehicles. Um, and in our report, we had close to about three quarters of the residential parking leaving in one hour, which is extremely conservative, so. Um, it it's kind of built into our analysis, um, you know, a little extra traffic.
Okay, Mr. Polinek, is a two percent increase, let's say over a year or two years, whatever it is, is that standard for like a area that's experiencing the growth that the Ironbound is?
Uh, it's based on data that's published by the New Jersey Tran- uh Department of Transportation for Essex County for certain roadways. So like, you know, either we had a collector roadway or a local roadway, so we applied it for for those specific roadways. It's not specific to the Ironbound, um, just portions of Essex roadways within Essex County.
But with Essex County being so diverse, how do they, is it fair to apply that to the Ironbound when you have, let's say, Montclair, Bloomfield, Verona? You know, these townships, West Orange, Orange, where there's really no urban density and then you take the Newark, which is like the largest city in. Literally all of New Jersey, is it fair to, and then the Ironbound, which is probably one of the most dense areas of all of New Jersey? Is it fair to apply that Essex County general to such a niche neighborhood?
Uh, well, I mean, it's it's certainly not, you know, a a study that's specifically done for the area, but I mean, there's ebbs and flows in traffic, you know. The restaurants and parking lots were here and they're being replaced by residential similar to other developments, so. You're not really taking a lot of um always vacant lots, it's more of a redevelopment, so there's a traffic give and a traffic take. Um, it's not as like, you know, you're establishing brand new traffic patterns, but no, I I understand your question and I I don't necessarily have. Specifically Ironbound traffic growth rates, but um, you know, we we work with what the D O T has published.
No, I understand there's limitation there, but when you say you're not adding traffic, how does having an extra, let's call it, I don't know, fifteen hundred residents? In my building, for example, the number one experience that people have, with all our parking, all our spots, I believe, are sold, right? There's no one spot in uh my building that they have available, but of my neighbors, so many park on the street, park blocks away. Li- literally, it's like everyone has a car, so and people, I've known people who sold their cars cuz they couldn't get spots, it's just not worth it, the cost. Four hundred dollars, you know, for a tandem spot, four, five hundred dollars for a tandem spot. So how can you say that you're not adding traffic when the people who live here now came from other areas and brought their vehicles with them? So aren't you inherently adding traffic?
You know, I I didn't mean, maybe I misspoke, I I we're certainly adding traffic to the area, it's, I I don't wanna make it, you know. A misnomer that that we're just, you know, it's gonna be a wash from, the the development will generate traffic that's included on our report. But um, you know, it's just when that traffic occurs, how much occurs during the busiest peak hour? The ratio of parking spaces to people leaving for their, you know, commutes in the morning, um, that sort of thing. That um, you know, we we're certainly adding traffic based on the four hundred parking spaces that will be used for the residents. It's just that not everybody leaves, like, you know, having four hundred vehicles leaving in one hour, people are dispersed over the, you know, people leave for at six to seven, seven to eight, eight to nine. Um, you know, when I, when I leave my driveway, I I don't really see any neighbors leaving at the same time, so everyone kind of, you know, flows out at a different timeframe, so I don't wanna make it sound like. We're not adding traffic, but we're certainly not adding a vehicle per parking space.
Okay, last question, I appreciate everyone for their time and patience here. In your experience, do you view, do buildings, let me be careful, uh, more craftful. So do buildings that have parking essentially? Do they add to traffic more than, uh, substantially more than buildings that simply don't have parking available? Like, if there's no parking available, do people break garages, just bring their cars and does traffic still happen? I think that would help a lot of people, cuz some people say, well, they don't, if there's less parking, then less traffic will happen, but maybe it's not true, is that your experience?
Yeah, I would say that um, you know, the provision of parking adds traffic just by virtue of having vehicles and the ability to have a vehicle. Uh, you know, like you said, if you if you didn't have parking here, some people may, you know, park on the street or some people people use lots. You know, off site, so there may be an element of traffic generated in the area, but maybe not specifically at these certain locations. Um, but no, I would say that parking generally equates to some traffic for sure, providing parking.
Okay, thank you so much, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. De Silva.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Miles Drake Zhang.
Uh, hello, yes, I'm trying to uh unmute my video, uh, let's see. And it says that I can't start the video because it's disabled by the host, uh, but I can still proceed with my questions.
All right, Mr. Beck is gonna swear you.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Zhang, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Uh, yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Miles Drake Zhang and I live in the James Street Commons Historic District. Uh, I'd like to start my questions to the traffic engineer, uh, Mr. Poliniak. Uh, so, Mr. Poliniak, uh, in your traffic studies. How many uh parking spots are you providing in this project for uh the residents of the building?
Yeah, it's a four hundred seventy parking spaces.
Okay, and how many units are in the building?
Fourteen hundred need.
Okay, so what percentage of the units uh will have a parking spot, assuming one unit per parking spot?
Well, well, one unit per parking spot would be fourteen hundred parking spaces, but I think, I think if you do the math, I think. The four hundred seventy per fourteen hundred is somewhere around a third of a space per unit.
So that means about if uh you were to portion the spots, about one in three apartments would have one spot, give or take, okay?
Yeah, correct, correct.
Okay, and that, and so by that model, are you assuming that the remaining two and three spots will use public transportation to get to work or get around?
Yeah, it's very likely, I mean, um, walk, bike, public transportation, bus, yeah, sure.
Yeah, and are you aware of what percentage of uh people in the Ironbound within the census tract uh that surrounds this building? Currently use public transportation to get to work?
Uh, no, I I have not recently looked at the census for this area.
Uh, are you aware of the nearest transit oriented development that's a close model to this might be somewhere like the Harrison and Harrison Pass Station? Um, are you aware of what percentage of people in the Harrison vicinity use public transportation to get to work?
I'm not, no, sorry.
Okay, uh, well, then I'll just add for information that in the census tract surrounding the Iberia Project. Uh, thirty percent of people uh use um public transportation to get to work.
Like, we'd like, I I'm gonna object, Madam Chair, um. Mr. Zhang can make his public statement um at the end of the meeting.
I'm making, I'm I'm I'm, uh, I I asked the applicant, uh, the applicant's uh traffic engineer a question that he didn't know the answer to. And so I thought to elucidate the board about what that answer might be.
Right, but you can, but you can elucidate the board during your public comment period.
Okay, so. Of course, of course, so then my question is, um, given that um thirty percent, thirty-three percent of people in the Harrison Transit Oriented Development. And thirty percent of people in the vicinity of this project use public transportation to get to work. Um, in your assessment for this property, um, could you help me to help the board to understand? Um, how this project arrived at the conclusion that uh seventy percent or about two thirds of the units. Um, would not, would be, would not have access to parking?
But I I I wanna, I I wanna, I wanna object to the question, I mean, the reality is that we don't have a parking requirement. So we don't have to make that calculation, so. Our person not to answer that question.
I'm I'm worried you don't have to make that uh calculation, I'm just uh asking the, out of curiosity, how the benchmarks for the number of parking spots was determined? Uh, given that there's a misalignment between the number, uh, the percentage of units that have parking versus the percentage of units that have parking. In the existing area or across comparable census tracts, um, so I'm aware Mr. Poliniak doesn't need to um answer that kind of a, kind of a question.
All right, Zhang, do you have another question?
Yes, I do, I do, I have a question for um the architect, Mr. Higgins. Hello, hello, Mr. Higgins, uh, do you, uh, out of curiosity, um. So how would you, uh, so you're, so when you design this project, you're considering the appearance of the building, the appearance of the neighborhood. Um, how would you characterize the scale and the kind of development that is currently found in the Ironbound?
Uh, adjacent to this property?
Yes, adjacent to this property, so it's immediately across the street, um, or immediately on the adjacent streets on Ferry Street, how would you characterize the scale?
Immediately to the north is the Blue Cross Blue Shield Building. Um, this is in a, an area that's adjacent to the park. Um, it's in a redevelopment plan area that calls for buildings of thirty stories and twenty-five stories. And then across the street on the riverfront, forty stories and taller, it's adjacent to a major transportation uh center for the state. It's a transit oriented development. That's how I would characterize.
So what I'll ask you is, um, for the, uh, across the street, so if I'm look um, to the three, three or four blocks. Uh, east of this project, uh, how would you characterize the scale of development, three or four blocks east of the Iberia site?
It's lower scale and a lot, a lot of it's industrial, I would say.
And uh, what is the average height of buildings to on the other side, on that eastern side?
On the eastern side, it probably varies between three and five stories.
Five stories, okay. And for the areas uh, to the uh, south of Ferry Street, how would you characterize the kind of development found along Ferry Street?
Uh, same thing. The south is uh, low, low, low density with a mixture of some taller buildings, maybe up to ten, twelve, fifteen stories. At different places, but primarily mid to low uh, density.
And in the average across iron bound, excluding the um, Blue Cross Blue Shield Building, which is the tallest building in the iron bound. Uh, how would you characterize the average height of height and density of those buildings elsewhere in the iron bound?
Sorry, uh. The average height, I really don't know. The average height, I would, I would guess maybe it's five stories, six stories.
So we have a five story project and this is a, a story project with two towers of twenty-six stories and um, two of thirty stories. Um, could you describe uh, the ways in which this project is in alignment with adjacent properties? Um, that is to the properties to immediately to the south and to the east. Um, how, what kind of design cues does this project borrow from its neighbors?
Uh, essentially, the zoning is driven by outside. The architecture, right? The, the, the city has identified this area as an area of need of redevelopment. Where they want a certain amount of density to do, to accomplish different things, whether to activate the street life, whether to activate the retail in the area. To make use of public transportation and park funds that have been invested by the state. Uh, along the waterfront and to activate all those spaces where significant investment has happened. This, this project's just meant to fill in a blank parcel. That's on the edge of a, of a established neighborhood with a large gap between it and and Ferry Street. And to uh, to get inactive, underused parcel and and activate it and turn it into a, a, a viable, pleasant, you know, part of the.
You, you talked a lot about how the reason, you said earlier in testimony that the reason. Uh, that the project goes right up to the property lines is, um, what was the reason you gave that the project goes right up to the Market Street property line?
I think the existing streetscape is built out to the property line, the adjacent.
The, the existing streetscape is built out to the property line, uh, and so therefore your project is built out to the property line.
Yes.
Okay, and would you describe the streetscape of the iron bound, that is, the buildings that go right to the property lines such as on Ferry Street? As being one of the defining features of the iron bound community?
Uh, in some way, sure.
Okay, and so you, would you just say that this project is kind of in compliance or kind of goes along with that, with that aesthetic? Of going to the right property lines?
So I, I, Miss, so I'm just going to interject only because this is not along Ferry Street and I want to be clear. And that we also do not have a height variance or a density variance and this project does not front Ferry Street and there. And the only reason I say that, Ms. Chair, um, Madam Chair, is because there seems to be confusion. Um, and it it happened previously in the last hearing, this property does not abut Ferry Street at all. Market. So I'm just, Mr. Zhang, I'm gonna just ask you, you know, just let me finish that one statement and also when our professionals, after you ask them a question, let them respond with it. Um, because they're a couple, you know, let him completely unders, uh, respond. He's also the architect. So if you have an, a question with respect to the col, the uh, the redevelopment plan or the, the, the uh. The aesthetics or the design of the iron bound or 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 anything relating to that, we do have a planner that you can ask questions to, but. Mr. Higgins designed a project um, within the parameters of the redevelopment plan and I think that was his testimony.
Okay, then I'll reword that question. So uh. Uh, would you say that this project is in generally in alignment with other buildings that are um, located on Prospect Street, Congress Street or Jefferson Street?
I would say we have a masonry base building that's four stories. The towers are set back from that base. So the, the, the base, the idea of towers on a base is to create a contextual base. And I think we've accomplished that with some visual interest in architectural uh, design.
Mr. Higgins, I mean, here's a challenge. Mrs. Zhang is asking questions about properties that are have in a completely different part of town and a completely different zone. And he's not addressing the, 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 the elephant in the room, which is this project is allowed in this zone. So all the questions you're asking are essentially wasting everyone's time because you're asking questions that are are very obvious. We all know it's a thirty story building. And we all know it's on Market Street. We know what's behind it. We know what's to the side of it. So, I mean, you have a, you have some time tonight to make a statement. You're not helping this matter by asking these questions that are very obvious that everybody understands.
Uh, I'd, I'd, I'd like to establish uh, how this project uh, is in keeping with the community. Uh, Mr. Webster made the statement that this project uh, is not. Isn't a totally separate area from uh, the questions to which.
It's a separate zone. It's separate zone. It has different zoning.
Okay, so that the, the, the zoning of the iron bound or the scale of the iron bound, those kinds of density or zoning requirements would not apply to this property?
That's correct.
Yes, and then I have uh, uh, further questions for, I believe, uh, Mr. um, McDonough, the planner.
All right, and this would be your last question?
Uh, yes, I believe those will be the last set of questions to um, the uh, planner.
If we can summarize, I just want folks to be cognizant that we're at nine twenty-one. This hearing is going to end at eleven o'clock. And we haven't gotten to public participation yet. So if you can make your questions so that they are. Cross examinations of the professionals, that would be greatly appreciated. Because there are a hundred and eleven people on this call who may have something that they want to add or to express or question.
Thank you. I'll keep my comments to the uh, planner quick. Uh, so Mr. McDonough, um, in your testimony, you often talked about uh, the community. Um, what is that word? Um, how, when you mentioned, you use the word community in your testimony? Um, what kind of groups are you referring to? How, what does that, what does that describe?
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, again, Madam Chair, I think we have to go to the questions that relate to the testimony provided. The definition community, I don't quite understand where, where we're getting with this, but. I would also want to remind the board that there's an obligation that was not only noted in the consent order, but also that sits in the rules with respect to. Ensuring that there isn't any uh, duplicative and unnecessary delays on this matter. We do have. Um, a consent order to proceed and make sure that this is done in a timely fashion and we ask that the hearing proceed that way. So. Delay tactics like asking um, our planners to define community, um, I just would ask that. Take that into consideration.
So given what we're doing right now, I'm going to say that we're gonna hear. The end of your questions, Mr. Zhang. We'll hear Ms. Rellaford and we'll hear from Nancy Zach. Then from there. We will go into public comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so just quickly for Mr. McDonough, um, so when you had the previous two community meetings. Uh, firstly, uh, what kinds of people attended the community meetings? Um, were they mostly community neighborhood people? Were they business people? What was, what was their variety? Uh, and how did the project evolve in response to those community needs, those community meetings?
Um, that's a, that's a really broad question. What kinds of people were at the community? I don't even know how to answer that.
That's, that's, thank you. That's it. Um, thank you, Mr. Zhang. Um, can we please have Ms. Rellaford? Re- remember, cross examination of the professionals, public comments come next.
Good evening, Miss Apollo. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give should be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, I'm Janice Rellafor the Follow, um, and I would like to speak. With the first person is the traffic uh, personnel, uh, Mr. Douglas.
Mr. Paulineak.
I'm so sorry.
No problem.
I didn't want to mess up the last name. I'm a southern girl. I'm a southern girl because I would mess this up.
I've heard it a million ways. It's okay.
Okay, um, I have a question. The time of day that you did these traffic studies in February and November.
Yes.
One of the uh, questions was, one was done in November on Veterans Day. And the other one was done in February. Uh, and I forgot. What time of day did you do the one in February?
Yeah, they were both done at similar times because what we do as traffic engineers are we study the busiest road timeframes. And those are typically your commuter hours. So all of our counts are generally done in the morning and evening peak period, like seven to nine AM. And then four to six thirty PM and then we isolate the busiest hour to study.
Okay, um. I am not a resident who lives in the iron bound, but I am a resident who lives in the central ward. And traffic here is extremely, you know, changed since I've been living here. In the central ward because I'm by Broad Street Station and we did put a new development next door to. The high rise that I live in. And I wanted to truly ask if you're giving. Six hundred and twenty parking spaces with retail. That has to affect, you know, the whole dynamics of uh. And we're by, and they're by Penn Station. And then you have more traffic with the other buildings that are surrounded. Did you look at the exact like Ferry Street? What's coming down Ferry Street? How much foot traffic? How much, you know, or just car traffic you looked at?
Yeah, no, those were all, we, we, our traffic counts included um, cars and pedestrians and bikes, trucks. Yep.
Okay, um, thank you. And so my, my next question would be. I'm gonna get to Jennifer. I'm gonna get to them trees. I'm getting to them trees. Is it, oh no, who do I question?
Okay, I, I, it depends on the question. Uh, so why don't you state your question and then it's either going to be Phil Scott or Mr. Higgins?
Okay. I am a little disappointed by the fact that, you know, every time I come onto the meetings, we always talk about. You know, we can't put the trees, but we'll donate to the, or, you know, to the Tree Foundation. The iron bound. Just. Like the South Ward, it needs trees. And you know, I know that you're saying that you're gonna put up the green wall and et cetera. And then you said we got the park, but you're putting two thirty story buildings and then two twenty-six story buildings. And then you're putting a parking garage. There has to be more trees. It's no way that you can say, oh, you know, we're doing a green wall. That's not gonna help those pedestrians who are walking, those pedestrians. Who are even driving, because now we're putting more into out that particular area into the community. Uh, we have to, we have to figure out the tree. The environmental aspects in the iron bound is a key. And being a person that goes into the iron bound, I noticed the air quality. It's very much different. I notice it in the South Ward is different. And so we have to stop this practice of, well, we need to put this here. And put that there. So I'm asking. Is there any way that there could be more adjustments to the green?
So, Miss Afalo, I will happily answer your question because we answered it before and we, it was in the testimony for the March hearing. We agreed on the record to work with the Arborists and put as many trees as we possibly can. If the city tells us you can't do this because of line of sight for safety issues for cars in and out or because there's. Electrical wires or something underneath, in that instance, then the ordinance allows us. To make a contribution, but we will side with. You on this and we did with the city is that we will make every effort to plant as many trees as we can. We're not opposed to it. It is that we've agreed to work with the city Arborist and the Department of Engineering to plant what we can. So. You know, I hope that answers your question because we've um, addressed it and and we're willing to work with the city on it. Okay, we, we can do what we can, um, as long as they allow us to, because in some instances, we, we are not permitted to.
How many trees were required, Attorney?
So that, that testimony was uh, provided, um, I don't remember the deficiency, Mr. Scott, can you provide that testimony?
Let me, let me see. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get back on video here.
No, no.
Okay, yes, so um, we were provide, uh, we were required to plant thirty-four trees. And we're providing nineteen. So um, as we've mentioned, uh, and as Ms. Coro Perez just mentioned. You know, we will try to, you know, do our very best to get to the thirty-four, uh, whatever trees we are not able to get to. We'll make the contribution to the tree fund.
But we're trying to follow. That's what we're gonna do.
We're making every effort possible. Um, if there's a way that we are allowed to plant trees uh, in a closer um. Uh, arrangement that's even closer than what the ordinance requires, we would be willing to do so. But again. Uh, that's gonna be in working with the Arborist for us to do, to do that.
Okay, um, and my last question is. Is this new development gonna be uh, gated or semi, you know, like its own community? Because you're talking about the wall and et cetera. So I wanted to know if this is gonna be like. Not a part of the community because it's gonna be gated or is the community going to be able to? Like have a, a path or walkthrough? To come through, walk through the property to get to another side or would they have to make a detour?
Uh, I, I, Mr. Higgins, I think the answer is that this is not a gated community, but. Mr. Higgins, I think the question is, uh, is there a walkthrough? There is not. Is that correct?
There's not a walkthrough, but there is circulation around the entire perimeter. And the idea was to provide access in the direction towards the Riverfront Park. To, so that everyone from the iron bound would have a clear, nicely landscaped and new sort of pathway that, that felt safe and was well lit. That would get you to the waterfront park.
Okay, and my final and last question is, we talked about uh, the parking. Um, we, I don't remember in, in our first meeting. And please correct me, Attorney Perez or anyone who was at the first meeting, that we talked so much about parking. I think that some of the needs were about, you know, putting uh, urgent care there. And you know, something that the community can really benefit from. So the question was, uh, as it was told to me. That this was a part of uh, Councilman Silva, uh, Community Benefit Agreement for the parking. Uh, in the public parking that you're speaking of, we would have to pay to park there. Am I correct?
Um, we're not sure. We're not uh, gonna be responsible for it. The city is gonna be responsible for it. So I don't know if they're gonna charge you or not.
Yeah, we're giving it to the city. The city will manage the parking.
Thank you for the clarity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rellafor the Follow. Um. I wanted to bring in Ms. Nancy Zach, but she stepped away and now I see her hand is raised again. Um. Jay Shin is on. The panel, if you can, Jay Shin, uh, uh, unmute, turn on your camera so that you can be sworn. Remember, we're doing cross examination of the professionals.
I, I heard my name called.
Yes, we're gonna give you an opportunity to cross examine the professionals that have testified. If you have other comments, questions or concerns, we'll have those wait until public comment.
I have a question for the planner.
Okay, Ms. Zach, we're gonna.
Yeah, so go ahead.
Oh, uh, my question is.
We, we have to swear you in first. Uh, did you, does your uh, camera work?
No, not right now, no.
Okay, uh, Ms. Zach, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board should be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Nancy Zach, two seventy-two Walnut Street. Newark, New Jersey.
All right, Mrs. Zach.
The question, one of my questions was already answered about the parking. Janice just asked that question. My other question for the planner is whether. Um, because the city's new master plan. because the city's new master plan states that there should be no increased density in the Ironbound section, how do you jive this huge amount of density with the current brand-new master plan that was passed by the city that everyone in in the city contributed to? And that statement is in there. Density in the Ironbound should not be increased. And I asked the planner that question.
The redevelopment plan is a policy document that was recently amended. And there was a finding that the redevelopment plan is substantially consistent with the redevelopment with the um master plan, which predated it, the twenty twenty-two master plan. So there's a direct nexus between the two. The redevelopment plan advances the master plan. This project advances the redevelopment plan. There's a there's a line there. There's a sequence.
I'm talking about the twenty twenty-four master plan?
The redevelopment plan amendments came after that. One followed the heels of the other.
And so, John, are you saying that the master plan is consistent with the redevelopment plan and the redevelopment plan allows for the density that we're proposing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I disagree.
Thank you, Ms. Zach, for your dedication to your community.
Oh, and my other question is, at the beginning of the hearing, we said we were going to present a case, our own case of our own expert testimony. And now I'm hearing that we're going straight to public comment without hearing that presentation.
No, I I presume we are gonna, I presume we are gonna hear the case. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna let that happen.
Yeah, a- and uh if I may, I I believe Ms. Renee, um, if I can, I I know, but when we get into that level, we should have asked. I I miss um, Madam Chair. The one question I don't think was answered um by Renee, I don't know if she's, I don't see her on here. Who who represents uh the a group of folks was who she actually is representing, um, just because there are, she was allowed to cross-examine. And I'm not objecting to it, just we didn't get to quite answer. So I don't know which group of folks she's representing as a as a group or which individuals, you know, are gonna be speaking separately. So just that was a question that wasn't answered. So just I apologize if if I missed it.
I was just reading. Well, I'll answer your question. I am solely representing.
Ms. Renee, can you announce yourself before you?
My name is Renee Steinhagen, and I'm trying to answer Jennifer's question. Jennifer, I was not able to even chat, so um. I am representing Homes for All Newark and people who are speaking are not members of Homes for All Newark.
Understood. Just because they said we, we're gonna put.
I understand that that's, people are speaking about.
Of course, of course.
Um, but I, everyone is very aware, no one who is speaking now is an actual member of Homes for All Newark.
Okay, and who who are the members, just for clarification?
Well, we have a dent, I I think you have to ask when someone gets up whether they're a member or not. We have our officers that have been the named plaintiffs and there are, there are a large number of people who are members.
Okay, no, just because.
Have to be, I was expecting that people would be asked if they're a member or not before public comment.
Okay, yeah, just because if you are, if they are represented by council.
Everything was explained. Most of the people who are speaking now.
Renee, I would just, out of courtesy, if I'm asking you a question, let me respond. That's all. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, we have uh Jay Shen is the last one for cross-examining.
Good evening, Ms. Shen. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Jay Shen. I live on Twenty-Five Prospect.
Okay, and you wanna cross-examine whom?
I had questions for the architect.
Okay.
If we can first ask, are you represented with New Jersey Appleseed? Are you a member of New Jersey Appleseed, since we have to ask every person?
No, I'm not.
Thank you. Or I apologize, not Appleseed, Homes for Newark, sorry.
Yes, Homes for Newark, Homes for All Newark.
Renee, your name just is easy to see in New Jersey Appleseed.
Yes, I am not, I, no, I am not part of Homes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
But I do have questions for Mr. Higgins. Um, some of the questions were already brought up by Mr. Zhang in terms of considering the context of this neighborhood. And I think that we all sort of understand the context in many ways isn't just the frontage, but movement from one place of the neighborhood to another. So, you you know, to Mr. Zhang's point, you had mentioned that there were some considerations in terms of designing of these twenty to thirty-story glass towers to sort of consider all aspects of the architectural context of the neighborhood. Just wondering if you can unpack that a little bit more for the community and the residents in the area. How how would you explain to us that your design of the glass towers sort of respond to the broader context of our neighborhood?
Well, I would say the contextual, the limits of the contextualness of this building have to do with the base of the building. The base of the building is masonry with uh punched openings, um bay windows uh of a scale, four-story scale, that's similar to other buildings in the in the Ironbound. Uh, the density that's desired on this site in order to achieve two hundred eighty-two affordable housing units requires a twenty percent, you just need a high-density project. So we try to make these towers um something, the glass has some effect of making it feel like a lighter building. It also uh is beneficial to the residents of the building. It allows more light and air into some of these apartments. And this are the limits of the contextualism, which wasn't a specific requirement of the redevelopment plan, but it's something we as urbanists are very, find very important, is is really limited to the base of the building. So we tried to provide neighborhood retail uh continuously around the base of the building. We had a masonry base that has some articulation and architectural gestures that are possibly reminiscent to elements and buildings that are similar to the buildings in the Ironbound. But the towers themselves are 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 residential towers and we designed it according to those standards.
Would you say as a practitioner and designer that there are precedents and practices out there that apply contextualism and contextual design to not only the pedestrian level, but also the general uh massing of the architecture as well as considering all four sides of the architectural design?
Uh, yes, I think so.
Would you, what would you um say to some of us um that you could potentially consider you could do even the current design?
That's what this is all about, you know?
Mr. Beck, do you have? Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say.
I'm sorry, could you just ask the question?
Yeah, my question is, can you expand what you just said, that there are other, professionally speaking, there are other ways to bring contextualism towards the tower, not just on the pedestrian level? What are some of the ways one can do that?
Right, well, we've tried to just um address, provide articulation. We have sort of a folded facade that not only provides some sort of corner type of spaces to interior units along the building, but allows light and shadow to play across the facade in a pleasing manner that we think will provide architectural interest. The palette of the building will be, um, will have some metals that sort of define some of the forms of the building, just to provide architectural interest. But but these are big buildings and um they're not, they're being created at a different age than than some of the um the towers that are in Newark, but it's probably gonna be consistent with some of the newer towers that are being constructed around the Jersey Back, seven-seven-seven Carter, those sort of residential towers.
Yeah, but they, I guess they are glass towers in the neighborhood. But I do want to also make uh another, you know, do a follow-up question on your consideration of the pedestrian experience because you did say that contextualism was part of the design of this uh street frontage. And you did, I I think there were many mentioning of creating active storefront frontage, um, street frontage. You know, Jefferson and Congress, the perpendicular connection to the riverfront from one of the most active street, uh, which is Ferry Street. Based on your design right now, uh, features two large loading docks, two electrical panels and garage entrances. Um, they do have outsized interruptions for the pedestrian experience. So how would you unpack for people who are more familiar with active design in terms of something like Ferry Street, that your design actually extends the kind of act active street frontage that we are familiar with on the Ferry Street side?
Well, it's true. Some of the we, the owner themselves and the developer would prefer a completely active street front, uh, you know, street frontage. They would rather have the retail space because it is an amenity to the building. Again, there's challenges bringing to having both parking garage and a residential building and have internal uh loading, which is difficult. The certainly where depending on what happens with PSENG, there is a chance that the electric services will be buried in the sidewalk or in the street. And that then those spaces which are about twenty-five, probably a hundred linear feet of frontage would be given back to active uh storefront. So those are the things we're hoping for. We push for those kind of things with the utility company, but we don't have a lot of we we can't demand for them not to have the that uh those spaces in the building. And the building needs electricity, so we have to comply with that. But we're gonna, we're gonna push for that and try to have as much active uh storefront as possible.
Yeah, but I guess um what I'm hearing from you right now at the design, the challenge is posed in terms of creating continuous active edges and is very different from the quality of liveliness that we see on the Ferry Street. So I think that's the feedback that I'm hearing from you, Mr. Higgins, right? Thank you. Um, those, uh, uh, I think Mr. Higgins answered my questions about the contextual in contextual nature of this design proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Shen. All right, so at this time, we're gonna stop the cross-examinations. And what we would like to do is to give uh an opportunity for Ms. Steinhagen to present her case. Are you muted? I can't.
So I'm going to do here an opening and move on, given the nature of the timing that we had. I just wanted to say good evening. And my name is Renee Steinhagen. I'm the Executive Director of New Jersey Appleseed, located in downtown Newark since our establishment in the late nineteen nineties. I'm co-counsel with an NJA board member, Cynthia Hagiyanis in this matter, representing Homes for All Newark. H-Fan is a coalition of renters, homeowners, activists from every ward in the city who are working to increase the affordability housing in the city and protect residents from displacement and strengthen livability and quality of life of Newark's neighborhoods. Accordingly, they're stakeholders in the development and planning processes in the city, and that's why they are asked to be participants in the hearing today. So why are we here after this matter was already heard in March twenty twenty-five and the board granted preliminary and final site approval of the applicant's proposed project? H-Fan appealed the approval and a remand was granted. The central planning board did not permit members of the public to cross-examine the applicant's three, at that time, three witnesses, contrary to the mandate of the MLUL to do so. And the original public notice just said that waivers and variance was would were would be sought without specifying what those deviations were. The city's staff report had said only four waivers had been requested, two of which concerned excessive illumination. And the applicant requested at the hearing two additional waivers. And the resolution, though acknowledging the six in the heading of the resolution, incorporated the analysis of the staff report that dealt only with four. And its analysis granted all of them without any factual analysis of each, nor a clear statement as to what standard or standards was being applied. Now, a revised notice was issued specifying eight modifications or variances with three dealing with excessive and now for the first time insufficient illumination. The active ground floor requirement waiver talks about parking garage and storage substituting for retail lobby or other active ground uses. Instead of previously, it said loading docks and electrical transformers. And there's now acknowledgement that a modification of the sidewalk width is needed. The applicant is intending, as we've heard, to provide sidewalks less than the required twelve feet, both on Congress and Jefferson. So what does the MLUL and the redevelopment and housing law require the board to do? First, all stakeholders must be permitted to participate, which you are allowing us to do. They also are allowed to present opposition case and they um through the presentation of fact witnesses and expert testimony through an attorney. But I just want to say for this record, the right to cross-examination cannot be one-off event. This board must permit members of the public to cross-examine in every central planning board hearing. The law requires the board to consider whether the applicant's plan is consistent with the goals of the master plan, is in conformity with the redevelopment plan as amended, and must consider numerous other factors such as public health issues, environmental concerns, including traffic impacts. And in the case of Newark, equitable growth principles should be adhered to. In addition, the board's decision should be couched in factual findings and a clear articulation of what standard of law is being applied. Such analysis and clarity is missing from the cu- res- current resolution adopted by the board in March. And we're here trying to make sure that that doesn't happen again. So what did the applicant say through its expert testimony in March and even today? The message of the planner has been that the project must be approved as of right, that no variances were required, and that very, very minor design waivers that were all, that they're all reasonable and appropriate must are needed. The applicant conveniently hasn't told the board that there is quite a number of C variances required when seeking derer, you know, we believe deviations from height, front yard setback, as well as the number of driveways, the access road widths, and the ground floor requirements, all deviations from the redevelopment plan that are needed for this plan to be uh as proposed to be approved. Furthermore, there's no mention that the redevelopment plan itself in Section thirteen O entitled Basis for Modifying Standards states that the na- uh the central planning board will only consider project-specific modifications of design standards if the applicant can demonstrate extraordinary hardship in the implementation of those standards. That is what the applicant is requesting is not minor or insignificant in its impact. Indeed, the applicant's failure to satisfy the redevelopment's plan regarding the active ground requirements, the six-foot setback, the shade tree requirement, the width of the public sidewalk, they and the number of driveways will all have a detrimental impact on the public experience, compromises regarding walkability and access to the waterfront, their health, and the community's capacity to deal with flooding and other environmental concerns. Most importantly, when failing to tell us how exactly the applicant is going to meet the ten percent publicly accessible open space requirement, the ex- the applicant's experts effectively downplay the importance of such environment requirement. However, I want to point out the Sixth Amendment to the redevelopment plan puts this requirement central to any proposal. Indeed, it makes the thirty stories maximum contingent on compliance with that requirement. And yes, the current plans conveniently do not tell us where the six percent publicly accessible open space will be. That will be determined later. Newark residents are tired of backroom deals that result in the approval of plans that are vague based on conditions not spelled out in the resolution and deficient in information, such as here where the submitted traffic report does not even take into account the traffic generated by the two new projects currently being built across the street from the Iberia site. The public expects when proposed plans are approved, especially in a redevelopment zone, they should conform to the requirements of the plan. And those requirements should further the goals and be consistent with the master plan. And those requirements should further the goals and be consistent with the master plan. Variances and design modifications may be authorized, but they should be held to a minimum, not the nine requested and the eleven that we think are required. So today, through our expert planner, Peter Steck, and three fact witnesses, we intend to subject the application to the scrutiny that this board should require of all plans, especially one that is massive and transformational as the Iberia redevelopment plan. The rhetoric of as of right, benefits outweigh cost, waivers are reasonable and appropriate, must give way to an analysis of whether the proposal in fact conforms to the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan as amended, which we will show it does not, and that the applicant has not proved or to justify all the design modifications, nor that the standards of a C variance are met. Our first witness will be Tanisha Garner, president of Newark Homes for All and a lifelong Newark resident, including over a decade living in the Einbahn where she currently resides. She represents renters and homeowners directly affected by this project. Her testimony addresses neighborhood character, community engagement, and housing stability, topics the master plan treats as central to the protection of our overburdened communities. She will be followed by Mr. Steck, who will provide his thorough analysis of the proposal with respect to the redevelopment plan, who in turn will be followed by two additional fact witnesses. Joseph Delafave brings decades as executive director of the Einbahn Community Corporation, eight years on Newark's Equitable Growth Advisory Commission, and authorship of Newark's Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance. His testimony connects the master plan and equitable growth principles to this project, specifically addressing the commission's process, the E G rubric that the city has adopted, and his experience in the Riverfront Development Plan process. These are facts about the city-adopted frameworks you're expected to apply. Our third witness will be Melissa Miles, who is the executive director of the New Jersey Environmental Justice Alliance and a long-term E J advocate who previously served as environmental justice manager right here in Einbahn. Her testimony covers the community experiences of flooding, heat, impervious surfaces, and remediation in the E J neighborhood, tying those facts to the environmental policies in the Newark three sixty master plan and the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan. So today, through our expert witness, we intend, so, we ask, given despite the time that it is tonight, that you listen to all of what our witnesses have to say, evaluate all the relevant factors, including Newark's policy of equitable growth, and base your decision on specific facts. This is a massive project that is set to alter the character of the neighborhood and significantly increase the density of the neighborhood contrary to the master plan directive to spare Einbahn from such increase prior to the development of a comprehensive climate plan. Moreover, one can assume that the sixth redevelopment amendment was crafted to meet the financial needs of the developer. There's simply no reason, let alone proof of extraordinary hardship to grant the design modifications nor the numerous variances that would be needed to approve these plans as proposed. I will turn this over to my co-counsel, who will present the witnesses. Cynthia Hagianis can can she be let in?
Raise your hand so I can add you to the panel.
Just rejoining us now.
Ms. Hagianis, if, once you join us, if you can unmute and turn your camera on.
Thank, thank you. Um, good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Um, I'm also here tonight as co-counsel with Renee Steinhagen. And I, I, I actually, given the late hour, I, I think I'd like to switch the order of our witnesses and put Mr. Steck up first. Mr. Steck's a professional planner, um, here to talk about the, the site plan and his review of the site plan and to reply to some of the statements made by the applicant's planner and some of his testimony. So, um, Mr. Steck, would you, um, give the board the benefit of your, um, background and your credentials?
Um, after I'm sworn in, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Steck. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Uh, my name is Peter Steck, S T E C K, eighty Maplewood Avenue, Maplewood, New Jersey. And I am, uh, a planner that's been hired by Homes for All Newark.
All right. You're accepted by the board. You can proceed, Mr. Steck.
Thank you. Uh, I have some exhibits, but I'm going to, uh, introduce them at the end as kind of a summary of my observations. It's important, and as the board is well aware, that this is governed by, uh, the redevelopment plan, which was amended fairly recently. So we're considering the Sixth Amendment, which addressed this specific site that specifically named, uh, lots one and lot eighty. Part of my analysis was to read the transcript of the last meeting. I looked at, uh, both the two thousand and twelve and two thousand and twenty-two, uh, master plan. Uh, I looked at the current zoning ordinance and I, uh, toured the site on, on several occasions. This site, as you know, is fenced off now, but it was, uh, used as a public or private parking lot for the general public with a hundred and eighty-four spaces. Prior to that, uh, as you know, it was a restaurant site. And, uh, a long time ago, as in nineteen oh eight, uh, the sandmore map shows that there was a railroad line that cuts through the property. Uh, and this was a coal yard and actually a plant for dog and poultry food. So it has a, I'll say, a storied history to it. It is technically a corner lot uh, under the definitions in your ordinance. And I just want to, as a side issue, yes, the redevelopment plan governs, governs development here, but in items that are not covered in the redevelopment plan, it says that you look at the conventional zoning ordinance, uh, for the city. So, um, you know, the applicant has described the project. What has not been described is the effect of phasing in the project. The applicant is going to construct first the phase one portion. We don't know what the remainder of the site is going to be used for after the first phase is constructed and before the second phase is developed, if it's ever developed. And that's significant because in the first phase, for example, the only access to the parking garage is on Congress near the intersection with Market. So in my opinion, the board has to analyze the project in both of its phases. And one possibility is forever, whatever reason, uh, the applicant does not build the second phase. That's a important consideration because markets change. The applicant might have a different experience with who's renting, uh, the, the building. There are a lot of unknowns, uh, that can happen. One thing not addressed, and I would say notably not addressed, is the amount of publicly accessible open space. Your redevelopment plan, uh, references the definitions of passive recreation and active recreation in your conventional zoning ordinance. And if you read it, it's what you would normally think of. It's, it's a green area on the ground that you can, um, walk in on or play on. That, that's, that's what publicly accessible open space is. The applicant made a cursory, the applicant's architect made a cursory statement is, oh, the open space is, um, you know, the green space along Market and other parts of the building. Well, and, and the applicant is proposing six percent open space. Well, I just did a short takeoff of the green space on the property uh, along Market Street. And I think that's less than two percent of the site area. So at this moment, we don't know where the six percent publicly accessible open space is. And that's important for two reasons. Number one, as indicated, uh, by Renee, the structure of your redevelopment plan is you can go from the normal twelve stories to the thirty-story height if you comply with the publicly accessible open space requirement. If you can't, you're not entitled to thirty stories. So at the moment, it's a mystery where that six percent is. I would love to see a plan that's colored that shows where it is and how the public gets to it. The other thing that ought to be put on the record, let's assume that the applicant can demonstrate that there is six percent of the site area as publicly accessible open space. Uh, I went through the calculations in your redevelopment plan. And I calculate that if six percent is complied with, the applicant is required to pay ten million dollars, nine hu- ten million, nine hundred, excuse me, ten million, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and seven hundred. So over ten million dollars. I don't, that amount of money has not been put on the record by any of the witnesses. And that's what we call a significant amount of money. So I want to run through my analysis of what is conforming to the plan and what isn't. Mr. McDonough accurately said that the plan is structured, so the issue of uses and bulk standards are items that are like zoning items. So relief from those are called variances. And the plan references the municipal land use law. So you can talk about hardship or benefits outweigh the detriments and you got to meet the negative criteria. The other items, and mostly in section eight of the, uh, redevelopment plan, uh, are design waivers. And as indicated, the standard is not, uh, appropriate and reasonable. The standard is outlined in section thirteen of your redevelopment plan. And it talks about demonstration of hardship. And hardship is relating to the specific characteristics of the site. Now, this is not one site of a hundred sites that are covered by a large zone. The Sixth Amendment is specific to this property. It mentions lot one and lot eighty. So the drafters of the ordinance knew exactly what this property was about when that amendment was, was, was made. So first point, I want to say, yes, there are permitted principal uses. It is a mixed-use project. You got to have at least a hundred and fifty parking spaces, uh, for the public. You have, there isn't a minimum number of residential units, but you got residential units. There is apparently, um, a hundred, excuse me, eighteen thousand and a hundred square feet of retail space. I'll note parenthetically that if you measure the perimeter, that the road, three road frontages, the retail space only covers about fifty-five percent of the parking garage, not the seventy-five percent that was looked for. So yes, these are permitted uses, principal uses. In terms of the height, the height is a crucial issue because allowance to go from twelve to thirty stories is completely dependent upon satisfaction of the publicly accessible open space. And as of the last hearing and this hearing, I don't know where the six percent is. And the applicant, and no one has mentioned the dollar amount that is the in lieu of payment. The second point I'd like to raise is that the two towers closest to the river are thirty-one stories tall. There is a, uh, amenity portion on the roof. And your code says in, in the zoning ordinance, section forty-one, colon, five dash, five dash, one says, you don't count, you, you can have, uh, rooftop amenities, but they can't be more than ten feet tall. And they can't occupy more than twenty percent of the roof area. The architectural plans show the roof amenity be over fifteen feet tall. And I calculate that rectangle on the roof as being twenty-eight percent of the roof area. So in my opinion, the two towers, the alleged thirty-story towers are really thirty-one stories beyond the height that the ordinance, uh, permits. There is also an issue of front setbacks and, uh, the architect, uh, said, well, you know, we looked at the general, uh, pattern of development in the area and their buildings that are, you know, right up at the front property line. That's not the standard of the redevelopment plan. The standard is in section five dash B of your redevelopment plan. And it says in subsection five, for corner lots, which this is, the following special setback requirements apply to the street frontage of the two intersecting streets. One of the setbacks of the new structure shall match the lesser front setback of the closest principal building on the block and on that street frontage. And then, as you know, the maximum setback would be six feet. Well, you don't look at the general neighborhood. On Congress Street, the closest principal building is over twenty feet back. So that's required to be a six-foot front yard. On Jefferson Street, the closest building has a small section that's four feet back, but the bulk of the front wall is fourteen feet back. So in both instances, the applicant needs a variance from the front setback on both Congress Street and on Jefferson Street. And what's important about that is if the building complied with the setbacks, you would have space to plant trees. You could have twelve-foot wide clearance areas for sidewalk. You could lower the impervious coverage. You could do a lot of things when you didn't cover ninety-eight percent, uh, of the site. The applicant is proposing, at least in the forms, zero setback. And i- in my opinion, um, that is not, uh, correct. There are parts of the building on, as you know, the building kind of undulates on Market Street. And there are sections there that are six feet, and that's why the six-foot would apply, in my opinion, minimum would apply to both, uh, Congress and to Jefferson. So that's a variance, although the applicant has not acknowledged there are any variances. If you carefully look Um if you carefully look at the architectural plans and the design in the podium, as you know, the first level is um, let's say, in some cases, retail. And then there are three stories of residential units. On stories two and three, there is a bump out of the building. And there are five instances, three on Jefferson and two on Congress, where the floor area of the apartment units are in the public right-of-way. And I can't figure out how the applicant gets permission to build on public property. So that's a significant uh issue because the applicant doesn't have the right uh to use public property for its uh private use. Um in terms of section eight B talks about parking placement. And your redevelopment plan says that uh parking garages with over four hundred and fifty spaces uh have to have uh more than one entrance and exit. And indeed, in the full build-out, if the built, if the applicant were constructing this all at once, there would be two points of entrance and exit. But uh on phase one, uh the applicant will not have uh four hundred and fifty spaces. And there is only one way in and out of this garage. So here's a five-level parking garage that uh has only one entrance and exit point on Congress, very close to the intersection. In fact, the driveway is about sixteen feet back from the stop line. So one and a half cars on Congress moving toward Market is going to block the total entrance to this parking garage. I'll also note that the residential site improvement standards, that's a state law that applies to all residential development. In section five colon twenty-one dash four point one six, subsection E three says that parking lots having more than a hundred spaces shall have a minimum of two means of ingress and egress to be provided with a divided-type entrance. So the theory is that that, on phase one, the residential site improvement standards require a boulevard, meaning the entrance drive is separated by the exit drive by a median strip. And that means that, so if one of them is blocked, uh emergency vehicles can still get in there. Um this has become, this is a, it it's important just from a traffic point of view, but also a safety point of view. That's why there is a a boulevard requirement. And again, this is the only way in and out of the phase one garage. Uh what is of concern, and I'm sure the board members know this, with all the use of electric vehicles, uh when there's a fire, you have to uh spend a lot of time in terms of water and and firefighting because these cars burned very hot. And it's not like a typical uh uh gas-driven car in terms of firefighting. So it is an important public safety issue, clearly in terms of phase one uh of the parking garage. There is the issue of uh street trees. And uh the applicant is proposing uh nineteen, uh which is short of the uh uh alleged thirty-four that is supposed to be along the street. Uh I'll mention this later, but the, well, first of all, I'll say that if the building were set back as it should be, in my opinion, you could, and and if you didn't have uh loading areas, uh and if you didn't have um transformer rooms, you could probably get a lot more trees in uh as well as a twelve-foot-wide sidewalk area. The master plan, the current master plan, which is dated September two thousand and twenty-two, and I believe adopted in twenty-three, specifically discourages relief on the number of trees. It says that that's discouraged because we want trees. Um and uh as already mentioned by one of the neighbors, uh the iron-bound section is recognized uh as had been one of the smallest amounts of a a tree canopy to it. I note that the redevelopment plan, where it doesn't address things directly and it doesn't have a factor on impervious coverage, um it does refer to items not covered to the conventional zoning ordinance. And I would note, for example, that in your conventional zoning ordinance, in the high-rise multifamily dwelling zone, uh you allow a maximum of seventy-five percent impervious and a maximum of seventy percent building coverage. In the mixed-use buildings with residential and non-residential use zone, you allow eighty-five percent impervious coverage and eighty percent uh lot coverage by buildings. There is in section eight P a design requirement for an active street front design. And in that section, in the table, it says prohibited ground floor uses. So this is not a dimensional area, is that you got to have a certain amount of square footage or linear. It says these uses are prohibited on the ground floor. And that's loading docks. And that's electrical transformers and mechanical equipment. So while at the minimum, relief is needed from those items, I highlight the fact that the redevelopment plan talks about it as a use. And I would suggest that it would be a C variance uh because it's an accessory use to the principal mixed use. Um there are some general plan issues that I want to raise. Now, uh Mr. McDonough, in quoting Pizzo Manten, says, you know, you just can't say that um uh this is bad planning. You have to look at the wording of the the ordinance. And uh again, when Mr. McDonough was asked, well, you know, should the site plan approved? And he says, oh, yes, this is generally approved. Uh now, I look for standards and I look for specifics, uh which, in my opinion, Mr. McDonough didn't address. Um let me suggest some things that ought to be discussed in the site plan approval. Uh first of all, this is an enclosed garage. It's fairly massive. And that means there, it has to be, the air has to be uh exited, has to be, uh there have to be fans that blow the air out of this garage so the carbon monoxide doesn't accumulate. Where is that, where are those fans going? Since this building uh abuts the the property line furthest to the south and everything else is on the street, where are you blowing the carbon monoxide that collects in this garage? That's a significant issue in terms of pedestrian activity. Um what is undetermined at the moment is where the hundred and fifty public parking spaces are going to go. Uh the applicant said it was going to be on one level. But if only the first, and we don't know what level that is yet. Um but if only the first phase is constructed and the applicant stops there, you don't have a hundred and fifty spaces. And again, a few years ago, before the site was blocked off, this site provided a hundred and eighty-two spaces for the general public. Um in terms of, if you look at the podium, there's a pool there. Now, the pool is kind of uh located, the swimming pool on the podium level is kind of located in the midst of buildings. And I would invite you to think about the shadow pattern to see how many hours in the day will the sun be able to touch this pool? And I would suggest that no one's going to get sunburned by this pool. Um on terms of the traffic study, uh Mr. Poliniak, and I and I think I'm, I was practicing the pronunciation because I used to be Stachkovich, but anyway. Um there was no specific analysis on phase one of the driveway exiting uh this site. Uh Mr. Poliniak said, oh, we studied the intersection. But the answer is this exit driveway and entrance driveway is going to be blocked by two cars at the end of Congress. I was there from about uh three to four a few days ago. I could barely get into a parking spot on the curb because of the amount of traffic that's exiting there. So a very difficult location to get out of. And can you imagine someone exiting that driveway and then wanting to turn left on Congress? Cars turning in from Market are right there on top of you. Um the, this project, while the the uh the two percent increase over time was scheduled for a two-year project, I think there's testimony in the record that this is at least going to be four years for the full development of the project. That means there's going to be more background traffic. But in most of the traffic studies that I've seen, when there is a project in the immediate area that is approved or in this case, under construction, that's not included in the two percent because it's in the immediate area. Those cars are going to exit uh in this area and they'll have an inter- and impact on the intersections and the ability to get out uh to, for example, even though it's a right turn uh on Market. That simply is not addressed. Uh the, Mr. McDonough uh talked about, uh he was asked at the last meeting uh in in two instances, is this uh project uh consistent with the master plan? And he didn't indicate which master plan he was talking about. Uh this evening, he talked about the two thousand and twenty-two master plan. Now, the redevelopment plan in terms of its consistency review, because it was done in two thousand and thirteen, only addressed the prior two thousand and twelve master plan. When the Sixth Amendment to this plan that refers to this specific property, no mention was made in the adoption of that memo, that amendment. And and i- any inconsistencies ought to be included in the plan. No mention was made that that amendment is consistent to the master plan in effect at that time, which was the two thousand and twenty-two master plan. Uh that two thousand and twenty-two master plan did not recommend that Lot Eighty, the one furthest from the river, be within the redevelopment area. Then, one can only conclude that if you read the master plan, you would say that the redevelopment plan is not consistent uh with the master plan. And the the plan, the, when the, when the Sixth Amendment was adopted, it, as far as I can tell, no one ever looked at the current master plan, which is a statutory requirement. You're supposed to identify the inconsistencies and you're supposed to describe them right in the redevelopment plan. Uh that's not there. So let it be, let's see, the best thing to do maybe is let me go, if I may, to my exhibit. If I can um let's see if I can do this. Okay, let's see if I can do this. Is that visible to the board members?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, let let's, let's uh, let's mark this. So, Mr. Stack, let's, let's, or or Miss Hadienis.
Yeah, if we could mark it as O one for identification.
And what is it?
Uh it it's, it's six pages that were prepared by me with photographs. Oh, and before I get to this, I want to jump off of one of the neighbor's questions. Again, the consistency of uh the redevelopment plan and particularly the Sixth Amendment. In the redevelopment plan, excuse me, in the master plan of two thou- September of two thousand and twenty-two, uh section three point six point five uh has the following. The iron-bound neighborhood is one of the most densely developed mixed-use portions of the city. Additional density is not recommended beyond what is currently permitted until a comprehensive climate adaption plan is prepared to outline the interventions necessary for long-term sustainability and resiliency. So when the Sixth Amendment was adopted, no one ever compared it to the current master plan, which is a statutory requirement. Uh let me run through my six pages, which um uh kind of summarize my conclusions. Uh the first page on the left-hand side has a Google Earth photo. And it shows the setbacks of the closest principal buildings on Jefferson and Congress. And that determines, according to the plan, the setbacks that are required on Congress and Jefferson. Uh the, on the right are photographs that were taken by me on December fourth of this year. And I believe they fairly accurately depict the existing conditions. Uh the second page is um the issue of the height of the building. Uh there is a, an activity story at the top which is not exempt because of its height, over fifteen feet. And it's coverage of twenty-eight percent of the rooftop. So that applies to the two tallest towers that are closest to the river. And the ordinance does not allow, first of all, it doesn't allow anything more than twelve stories unless you identify the publicly accessible open space. But aside from that, it doesn't allow thirty-one-story buildings. And that would be a variance uh not a waiver. Um there are, as I mentioned, portions of the building. Uh and you see at the lower right-hand side, on Jefferson Street, there are three portions on two stories. And on Congress Street, there are two portions of two stories. So there are a total of ten dwelling units that are built over public property. Uh I don't know how you accommodate that. Um normally, you can't. Uh you, you know, there's small things like a a a blade sign, um, you know, maybe a canopy over an entrance. But I don't know any instances where you're permitted to build part of a residential property, uh a residential apartment on public property. Um the next page shows what potential areas are green space. And in the upper diagram is the fifth floor, so that's on top of the podium. And again, uh that's where the pool is that is um, again, no one's going to get sunburned on that pool. Um but it, there is no indication of any land here that would be used uh accessible to the public. And on the lower diagram is the green areas on the rooftop. And on the lower diagram is the green areas on the rooftop. And again, uh, someone has to go in the building, has to go up the elevators to get access to these. There's no indication of any publicly accessible area. The architect has mentioned the, uh, thin grass strip along Market Street um, as open space. It's publicly accessible. I guess you can step off the sidewalk. But that is less than 2%. The other thing that's interesting, if you recall, is, as I mentioned, the retail uh, space that frames the parking garage is only 55% of the perimeter of the three streets. What is also a fact is that the plan, while it has retail along Market Street, there are no doors there. So how do you get an active area where there are no doors? That, uh, confounds me. Um, this is kind of a summary of the disruptions on the sidewalk level under the current plan. Um, the blue rectangles show areas where instead of a 12-foot wide, clear sidewalk area, the applicant is only proposing five feet in width. Uh, and there are a number of these, as you can see. The pink rectangle shows six driveway locations. And you're only permitted two. And, uh, the proper place, in my opinion, for having a loading area and having utilities is probably on the left side, the southern area of the site. That's away from the streets. You could have one driveway that accesses all of these functions. Uh, but yet the applicant is, um, is interrupting what the intent of the master, of the redevelopment plan was, is to have an active street area. And also, we're being shorted on the trees. Uh, I calculated 35 needed at one per 35 feet of, uh, length of frontage. And I mentioned there that there are no retail doors. Uh, the final part of this is looking at the current master plan that should have been reviewed uh, when the Sixth, um, amendment to the redevelopment plan was adopted. And again, there, that plan said, don't increase the density in the Ironbound area until you assess uh, long-term sustainability and resiliency. I don't think that has happened yet. But this shows that Lot 80 in the, the 2022 master plan was recommended for an R4 designation. That doesn't permit retail uses, it doesn't permit high rises. So that, um, not only does this, does the master plan not support the current, uh, Sixth Amendment, but these provisions, at least for phase two of the project, um, cannot be, uh, one cannot conclude that the relief sought, um, is consistent with the master plan or supported by the master plan. Uh, let me put this down. All right. Uh, so summary observations. The applicant has the burden of proof. And, and by the way, uh, while you have a, certainly a competent, uh, municipal staff, just because the staff is okay with it is not a statutory proof. The applicant has to show why relief is justified. Um, there are several variances in needed, and the applicant's planner uh, was not able to identify any of those variances. In fact, his testimony is that there are no variances. There are a host of loose ends here. Um, the traffic study, I think there's supposed to be additional studies. I don't know if, if they've been done, but they're certainly not, don't appear to be part of the record. There's no indication of where the 6% publicly accessible space is. There's no analysis of what happens if only phase one gets built. Uh, there is no certification of where the 150 public parking spaces are going to be. Are they going to be hidden in the basement? Are they going to be convenient on the first level? We don't know. Um, the master plan of 2022 has a lot of discussion of of s- street trees. And it says, variances that permit payments to the s- to the tree fund in lieu of planting should be discouraged. That's one of the, uh, recommendations on page 74 of Appendix 1, the land use element of the 2022 master plan. The goal of the master plan is to connect existing neighborhoods to the riverfront and have a walkable development. That page with all the colors on it showing the interruptions of the 12 feet, uh, that clearly is contrary to the goal of the redevelopment plan. There is no hardship here because, and again, the hardship has to be related to the peculiarities of the site. This is a site where the governing body knew exactly the dimensions of it and probably saw conceptual plans when they adopted the Sixth Amendment. Uh, they knew, so in my opinion, there is no basis under hardship. The applicant is not required to provide 1,408 dwelling units. It would still comply if there were fewer dwelling units. It could still comply if the building stepped or set back from the property line as is required. Um, clearly, as proposed, in my opinion, this would, project would be, would substantially impair the public good. And I referenced particularly that one access driveway for phase one. I don't know how that's going to operate. Uh, I invite you between 4:00 and 5:30 to go stand on the sidewalk on, uh, Congress and take a look at how the traffic backs up there and how you exiting the parking garage or entering it would navigate, uh, during that rush hour. Um, there are too many loose ends for the board, in my opinion, to grant preliminary and final site plan approval. Phase two is inconsistent with the master plan. And in fact, I believe the redevelopment plan is defective in that the Sixth Amendment was never compared to the policies of the current master plan. So for that reason, I do not believe the board has been presented with substantial credible evidence that would allow it to approve this application based on the record, uh, presented at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. Um, we're looking at the time, it's presently 10:43. This meeting will end at 11:00 PM. Uh, Ms. Hadianis, uh, Mr. Webster, Ms. Corilla Perez. Um, I would like your, um, for you to opine on how we're going to proceed from here.
Um, I, I don't, Ms., I'd like Ms. Hadianis to put, to, to put in her, begin with her fact witnesses, and we'll end at 11:00.
Okay, um, thank you. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Stack? And, uh, Mr. Webster?
I, 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 I will, I will be crossing Mr. Stack at the conclusion of your, uh, fact witnesses.
Okay, okay, so, um, then the, um, next witness is Tanisha Garner. Um, so Tanisha, can you raise your hand so they can promote you? When I, I, oh, hi, you're right here. Hold on one second. I wanted to, um, move Mr. Stack's presentation into evidence. Okay, so, um, okay.
I have no objection.
Thank, thank you very much. Um, so, um, I'm, Ms. Garner, I believe, uh, Mr. Beck has to swear you in.
All right, and before you do that, I want to make a statement for the record, um, just for transparency. Um, at this point in time, I want to disclose that Ms. Garner um, is related to me by blood. Um, and I affirm that this relationship will not influence my, uh, evaluation of her, uh, statements or my decision with regards to this matter. Thank you.
I agree. And just for the record, we were informed of this issue by your counsel earlier today, and we have no objections.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Um, so, uh, Mr. Beck?
Yes, good evening. There we go. Okay, we're in the bottom. Good evening, Ms. Garner. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Tanisha Garner. I'm the president of Homes for All Newark.
Okay, um, Ms. Garner, um, could you, um, tell us a little more about your background and about Homes for All Newark?
Uh, so my background, um, so I'm a third, fourth generation Newarker, been born and raised here. Mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, so the, the lineage is definitely long. I definitely want to give acknowledgement, uh, to the creator. We call them by different names, so right now I'm just saying the creator. And also the Lenny, Lenapele, um, Indians, that land was here first. Uh, so Newark is very dear to me. I have grown a lot. Um, I was part of the Newark shops, was, which part of, um, the city of Newark. Uh, we had, uh, a store on Polk Street. It was, uh, different, um, community members that came together and had the store. And that was through Rosenthal Capital. So that was dealt with low-income, uh, entrepreneurs to be able to, uh, manifest what they wanted to do, um, through creativity, um, through business. So, um, I was happy to have that opportunity. I was also part of, of the Newark, um, borough. Uh, where we, uh, the, uh, the visitor bureau also had my jury, um, also in there. So I'm also, uh, a small business owner. It's called Chosen Designs. Uh, I did a lot, uh, within the community, especially with Terrell Homes, which was the backyard that was connected to uh, the Sixth Amendment, um, Riverfront Redevelopment Plan. And they have been displaced. Um, I actually had the honor to work with some of the students, um, there. And at that time, uh, it was a, a murder at, um, Hyatt Court. And, um, uh, that was this time of my graduation. And that, you know, was a major impact on the community and how, um, the community is affected. And I had the, um, the privilege to actually work with some of the students um, from Terrell Homes, also Aspen River Park Apartments, and also around the neighboring, um, neighborhoods. And I actually, um, received a donation from the Prudential Center to go see the Devils game, which one of the students actually, uh, was participating, um, as, um, as a hockey player.
Okay, wait, Ms., Ms. Garner, I want to bring it back, though, to what.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I just, I just want to do, no, I, I want to give the tone, let them understand the importance of this project and what it means, um, when you plan in the community. And then when you're planning and how the community is being displaced. So I just wanted to let them know, um, of, of the history of how much this project, uh, or, uh, the city means to me. And how the residents, um, that I have met along the way and how they have been affected. So I just wanted to, um, give that background.
And, and how long have you lived in the Ironbound?
Uh, 11 years.
Okay.
I've lived in Newark all my life.
Okay, um, so what, what is Homes for All Newark and what is its mission?
So, um, Homes for All Newark, uh, we deal with, um, I, I, I know we definitely helped in with the rent control ordinance. We had over 100 petitions, uh, that, uh, we actually, uh, we drove a ballot initiative. And the city of Newark, um, actually, um, passed the ordinance uh, for us to have the rent control, um, rent control ordinance now throughout the city of Newark. We have been very, very pivotal, pivotal in that. And also with the MX3, when they changed it to zone for 20 stories, and we end up getting it down to 12. Uh, we also, um, uh, members of like, um, homeowners, renters, um, throughout the city of Newark from all the wards. So this is what makes it special, and we also, uh, do, um, tenant training. And we also help, uh, different residents when they have different, uh, conditions that they are facing displacement. So we are very pivotal in the movement of, uh, working, you know, with the city, working with the stakeholders, and also working with the community to make sure it's transparency and their voices are being heard.
Okay, and so, so how have you helped people participate in the planning process?
So, uh, we have worked with, um, different organizations. Uh, one of the organizations that we worked with was, was NOFAD. And NOFAD, um, actually educates the community on, um, on development and understanding the processes of how the process is being done and how it's beneficial for the community and also for the city.
Okay, and, um, how, how do you feel that this, this proposed project, the Iberia project, will affect the Ironbound's character?
It would dramatically, um, dramatically affect the character of the community. When you think of a character, they're thinking about the physical state. It's more than a physical state. We are, we are physical and spiritual beings. So when you think about planning, how are you aligning with the quality of life of the residents that have to live here? So when, when we look at that part, it, it deals with the economics. And when we're looking at how the world and also, um, national economics is being affected, especially, um, through the artificial intelligence, a lot of the jobs are being, uh, are being replaced. So when we say that, um, that they are targeting certain, uh, demographics with a certain amount of income, how do we put into effect of how their income will be affected if they lose their jobs? We just came out of, of the shutdown. And many of the, um, employees did not receive paychecks for over, uh, for over a month. And we realized that we are close to, um, uh, the airport. And we have a lot of, um, pilots and, um, flight attendants that do, uh, that resides in many of, of these properties. So we have to take into consideration of how, um, economically and, um, cohesive that we are planning to make sure that these developments do fully be occupied and make sure that we do have a thriving economic system that could actually be able to, um, to be able to boost the city of Newark.
Okay, and then just specifically, what's your reaction to this proposed development?
It's, it's not good, it's, it's, it's not good, um, it's, it's not, it's not sound development. The reason why it's not sound development, because we are an invest, um, an environmental justice community. Our river, she is a part of us. Uh, of, when we, when we think of that, we think about the pollution and they trying to sell her as an amenity. And how, how can you sell her as an amenity when her ecosystem will be affected? The birds, the, um, the, the, uh, the plants, the animals, uh, the fish that's in that e- ecosystem is helping her to heal, as well as we're working on, um, with the, uh, EPA, DP to get it clinked. So in that process, we have to understand the community impact, especially by us being an environmental justice community. A lot of, uh, members that I know and residents that I know has passed away from cancer. And a lot of them still have cancer. So this is a major, um, cancer cluster. So what, so what are we saying when we bringing in new residents here? We are bringing them into a cancer cluster area. And, 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 and that means that that's going to raise the rates on, on especially our health, uh, when it deals with the hospitals. And then when people get sick, they lose their jobs. So what happens when they lose their jobs? Are you going to evict people and they're going to be displaced? So these are many factors that we need to look at. And especially that we're connected to major highways, we don't have an evacuation plan. We just seen what happened at Port Newark with that big fire. And a lot of our, um, of the fire equipment is inadequately. So what are we going to do to make sure that the community will be able to get out safely? Or God forbid, if it's a fire, um, in that building, that's 30 stories. Our ladders does not go up to 30 stories. So God forbid if something happens. We just had a death. We just had a death several years ago in four forty Washington Street, where a child was on the twentieth floor and the, 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 the fire department could not reach that child in time. So we must think about these issues and the quality of life and make sure that we are all being protected.
Okay, so Ms. Garner, going back to the planning, kind of the planning process, you, as a member of the community, you participated in the original Riverfront Plan and in the Newark three sixty Master Plan. Can you contrast how community involvement worked there versus how it's working here with the, the, the community involvement in Iberia's development process?
No, the previous plans with the three sixty and the redevelopment plan, it was different. It was more cohesive. It was more community and stakeholder-led. It was about the input and about how can we truly be able to create the space that we want to live in? So when it came to the Iberia two Realty project, yes, we did have meetings. However, when we had our first meeting in the fall of two, twenty twenty-three, the residents specifically stated that why, when, when they showed us the plan, they showed us that the rendering was of two twenty-story, two twenty-six stories and two thirty-story buildings. And we asked them why, because we don't want it, because of the congestion, because of the traffic. And then they also had a concern about, because we don't have a hospital. So when, when we look at the congestion of the traffic that flows, what are going to happen to the residents that has emergency issues and they can't reach it in time? And it actually happened to me because my mother passed away in two thousand nineteen, and it couldn't reach to get to me in time to save my mother. So what about all the other families that's, that would be impacted by it?
Okay, so you, 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 when Iberia had these community meetings, can you just describe what happened at those? You said you gave them a little feedback. Was there anything else that happened at those meetings?
Yeah, so, so the feedback was that we wanted to have a, a health center there because we don't have a hospital in the Ironbound. So that's why I was making the point about my mom. You know, family member, or anyone else that has passed away in the.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry about your mom.
Thank you. And then what, so we have a meeting in twenty twenty-three, a fall. Then we had, we went to the council meeting that was in, of November of twenty twenty-four. And that's when they literally changed the zoning law. And we had, and we also testified, it was many members that testified that day. And when we testified that day, we also stated, why are you changing the zoning law from twelve stories to thirty stories? And I actually went to the planning board meeting, I actually went to the planning board office. And, and they said they did not have any records of the plan that they knew of the two, the two twenty-six and the two thirty stories. So it's like, are you creating laws and passing laws to benefit the developer and not listen to the community? Because if you don't have a community, you do not have any profit. You do not have any profit, the city will fail. And so that was, that was a major issue. And then once, once we, once the, the zoning ordinance was passed, then of March third of twenty twenty-five, that's when they said, we can't dispute it because the law has been changed for them to build two twenty-six and two thirty-story buildings.
And I, I do want to be mindful of the time because we're at ten fifty-nine. We, we have three more questions for Ms. Garner. If the chairwoman wants us to just pick up at, at another meeting, or should we finish with Ms. Garner's testimony?
Mr. Beck, I would like to close. I want to honor the eleven o'clock.
I, I would, it's your call, Madam Chair. I, I guess the next thing is finding a, a date for the continuation. And then I guess setting some of the ground rules, just so everybody's on the same page of what's, what's to come forward next.
I, I'd like to propose carrying it to the next meeting as possible. And then we can spend the time working with staff to find out really what date. I don't think we'll be heard at that next date, but I don't want to push it off for two or three months. So we can just carry it to the next, the next meeting, and then by that time, we can figure out when we'll actually do the, the hearing. Ms. Evans, if that's, if that's, if that Ms. Evans person, if that's okay with you, I think that's what I'd like to ask for.
So I know we have discussed a date. Realistically, it will not be heard until February. That's literally the next available date for a special because you, it can't be added to a regular agenda. So the next available date would be February second for a special.
All right, well, let's, let's, I, I guess my, my, I guess my question is, can we cap, when, when's the next meeting?
On Monday.
So can we just carry it to next Monday, and then we can work together with your office to see if February, and then we can just figure it out at the beginning and next, at the next meeting and announce the date?
Chair Rich, as soon as I refer you.
I'm Chair Rich. Oh, my goodness, he must be talking about.
Since it's our, since we were the ones who wanted the remand, if we could be included in that scheduling discussion that proceeds Monday's meeting, I'd appreciate it.
That's on the council. It's their application, so that's up to them. But Chair Witcher, if you'd like to carry it to next, I can add it to the top of the agenda so we can have a definitive date.
We can define the date at the beginning of the next meeting.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Garner. Thank you, community, right? This has been five hours, right? So no one can turn around and tell us we don't love Newark. We have been focused, right, and attentive to task.
And that we didn't hear our community.
That's it. So have a good evening. Y'all be safe. And, you know, we'll see you next week.